Chaska City Council Meeting for Monday, May 16, 2022. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:00. Please stand and join me in Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. You've got a busy night, so I'm just going to go ahead and have a lease call roll, please.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Here.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Your councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Grau.
Mayor Winchell.
Here. Councilmember Grau is going to be joining us. He's just got a little family logistics issues going on, so he will be joining us here sometime throughout the evening. With that, we will move to item four, and that is adopting the agenda. There are no corrections or additions. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing and seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. With that, I have a proclamation. Ladies, if you guys want to come on up, I'll read here and I'll meet you out there, or I'll hand it over to you. So with us tonight, we have some ladies from the auxiliary. I know we have Patty.
Karen Cath.
Cath.
Jen Stoltz.
Jen?
Jen.
Okay. All right. Proclamation in recognition of Chaska American Legion Auxiliary Unit 57 Poppy Days. Whereas the poppy as a memorial flower for the American war dead is a tradition which began in years following the First World War. And whereas veterans returning to their homes and in this country after World War I remembered the wild poppies which line the devastated battlefields of France and Flanders Field. And whereas the poppy is a symbol of hope for all veterans who served this great country through the military service. And whereas the Chaska American Legion Auxiliary Unit 57 adopted the poppy as its memorial flower to pay tribute to the war dead and aid the living veterans and their families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Chaska does hereby proclaim May 26, 27, 28, 2022 as poppy days and urges all citizens to pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing a memorial poppy on these days. In witness whereof, I have set my hand in the seal of the city of Chaska this 16th day of May in the year of our Lord 2022. Sign this here quick for you. And you've got some thing that you want to drop off? You're more than welcome to come on up and do that, if you like.
Yep.
I did? Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If I can get this in this folder.
I have no way of wearing it right now.
Thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I might be able to get this Patty. Yep.
It might get lost in there.
Thank you. I'm not getting it. I was not going to get it in there. There's no way. Thank you all. And everybody got one?
Yep.
Okay. Good. Good. All right. With that, we will move to visitor presentation. And on my agenda, I have the State of the Library 2022 with Heidi Hox and Jody Edstrom.
Well, thank you so much for allowing us to come and present tonight. It's always a pleasure coming and presenting to the Chaska Board because your people are so wonderful. And of course, that makes us want to serve them even more. However, 2020 was a tough year to serve our customers well when we shut down. We did a hard stop, which was followed by a hard pivot, as Apollo Ono says. And finally, we got to the place where we could do an evolution. And you'll see that on the annual report that you have next to you. It's in a Z cut, which makes it a little difficult to hold. It wants to open up to a certain page, and I'll talk to you about that in just a second. Pardon me. Tough to get through that word. In 2021, we started to evolve. We started to think of the normal we were in as not the abnormal, not the new normal, but the next normal. The next normal, which meant that we could learn from the past and evolve into our future. And that's exactly what we did. We started doing programs that were held virtually, and we're going to keep on doing some of those. We started delivering our books in different ways. We changed from having all print books to having electronic books, the electronic databases, electronic materials that people could access from their homes and could work on anything they wanted from their homes as well as in the library. Now, did this cut down on our circulation? Did this cut down on the number of people coming in? A little bit, but not as much as we thought. For example, in 2020, we had a good checkout rate and a good number of people signing up for library cards. In 2021, we more than doubled the number of library cards people were signing up for. With the virtual programs, the most popular virtual program had 2,700 people attend. I don't think we could ever have a meeting room that could fill, could have the capacity for that. However, in 2021, we also noted that it was the beginning of coming back to real programs, programs in person at the library. And from September through December, we had over 5,000 people coming to Storytime. People wanted to come back to the library, and we wanted them to come back. We were prepared. All of our teams, and we work in teams, had been working on new ways, new strategies. They could show the public what we had available for them. And you'll see that on your back of your Z-fold. You'll also notice on the back of your C-fold that we have a timeline that shows what we did to get prepared and what we keep on doing to be prepared for you, because that's what our library wants to do. We want to keep things rolling, just like your sticker says with a QR code. That's how we roll. But to see exactly how we roll from our local library, our Chaska library, is your branch manager, Jody Edstrom.
Thank you, Heidi.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I had to wear my Chaska Hawks colors. I came straight from the ball field,
just side note, watching my daughter play, so.
It's all right. It looks good.
It was festive, yeah. So always a pleasure to come and talk to you about what's happening locally here at the Chaska Library. So I'll try to hit some brief highlights. There's always so much more I could share. And as Heidi said, you know, we came out of a really challenging year in 2020. 2021 has been great. We're starting to, you know, I think our really overarching theme was welcoming back and bringing people back in our doors. And as we welcomed back, and I've got Kevin running my PowerPoint here, our circulation started to come back as well. You'll know that, you know, our heaviest portion of our circulation is the youth print materials for children. So really bringing those families and children back in is such a huge, exciting piece for those of us that work with them. Next, Kevin. So again, welcoming back. We finally were able to reopen for some services in February. And then as we progressed through the year, we finally were able to get back to our full hours in September and start to bring back those in-person programs. Next. Throughout 2021, our librarians here at Chaska played an important role in the system-wide virtual programming with live Storytimes on Facebook page, virtual Book Buddies, book clubs, bringing kids together online. Any way that we could find ways to connect with our patrons while we were still operating under, you know, some guidelines for not being totally back in person yet. So go ahead, Kevin. And same for our adult programming. I'm the liaison for our county's adult services team, and so really working to bring some great authors and great musicians to our residents and to connect with people. And that's something that we're talking about, too, as we move forward, how much of the virtual piece we want to hang on to in addition to, you know, all of those important in-person interactions. Next. And I always have to put a little note in. Here's my best assistant branch managers, my daughter Morgan and our dog Duke. We contributed some cooking classes, and we continue to do that as well. Next. So in September, we did bring back in-person Storytimes, which was wonderful. Staff were so beyond excited to finally be able to reconnect in person and have those experiences. It makes such a huge difference, especially with the younger folks, but really for all ages, being able to interact in person again. Next. And so gradually with that, we were able to bring back some other in-person programming. One of, in the photos here, you see our Tales for Reading program that we offer every other month in Chaska with North Star Therapy animals. Not only do we have dogs, but now we have a guinea pig as well, so. But then, of course, all of our other really important key programs, like Thousand Books Before Kindergarten and our summer reading program, which we're planning for right now. Next. Storywalks. We want to say a huge thank you to City of Chaska and Parks and Rec. This was a great way in 2021 during the summer to be able to get out and meet people where they were and to have those safe activities. We love going out to Fireman's Park, City Square Park, and being out and about in the community. Next. Programming for teens. We had a great young teen who submitted artwork for our Teen Bookmark Contest last summer, so a great picture of her here. And we're really trying to connect with that age group, too, which is, can be, you know, a challenging age group to do so. We have now some, what we're calling Teen Flat Packs, so teens can come right into the library and pick up a monthly free activity. This one shown here is, it was a gratitude pack surrounding the Thanksgiving holiday. So they come in and all the supplies are ready to go, and they can pick those up. Next. And of course, we continue to look at our community's needs and desires for adult programming, whether it's in-person or virtual. And here's a shot of our fireplace area, which we pared down a lot of furniture because of the social distancing. But just to note that we're really pivoting this space when we can offer in-person programs, and it's been really helpful to be able to do that. Next. We finally in 2021 could get back out and do some outreach. Here's Jennifer Hemkin, our Youth Services Librarian, doing some outreach in a couple of the lower-income neighborhoods in Chaska. And then Margot Berry can be seen loading up some bins to go out to some of the senior residences for monthly deposit collections. So this is a huge part. I know outreach is, our team is so passionate about that and really trying to get out into the community here. Next. And we couldn't do what we do without a lot of wonderful partnerships. Specifically, we have, you know, great partnerships with City of Chaska and Parks and Rec, the Downtown Business Alliance. We also work with a lot of our county partners, a couple of exciting things that have come out of our Career Force partnership from Health and Human Services. We worked with them to get ARPA funds to get additional Wi-Fi hotspots into circulation this year, so we have 40 additional that folks are able to check out. And then just last week, we launched a monthly help desk, two hours on the second Tuesday of the month with Career Force right in our library. And we have a Career Force counselor that's going to be on site to answer questions about job searching, resumes, those sorts of things, and just try to help connect our patrons, community members with those services. Next. These are just some fun photos of several of these partnership events along the way. Next. Couple other quick highlights. A couple of really cute little guys that had a lemonade stand actually over in City of Carver last summer, and they targeted the Chaska Library as where they wanted to donate their funds. So they literally brought their money in in a Ziploc bag, and we were able to purchase books that are staying here and homing here in Chaska, which is just fantastic. And then maybe some of you saw the MELSA ad that's been airing on TV, and our own Chaska Welcome Doors were featured in that. So very exciting. And that new entrance has been really serving us well. Great feedback from the community about that. Next. One, a couple last pieces. Here in Chaska, we have our library administration office for the whole system, where a lot of important work happens. Obviously, that's where Heidi's office resides, as well as our systems admin. But then we do all of the processing and receiving for all the new materials for the whole system. So a lot of really important work that's being done here in Chaska. Next. And we have to say thank you to the Friends of the Chaska Library. They are such a huge supportive group. They were able to have their River City Day sale again last summer, which was so exciting, great energy there. And they're getting all ready for this July. They are so excited about it. Next. So what's next? Lots and lots. We have just some great projects and things happening. I'm just going to highlight one, and I encourage you to stop at the library sometime and ask us more about it. We just launched a seed library project here at the Chaska Library with Charles Dulkey Funding through a grant. And so we are working on handing out heirloom seeds that folks can grow and then potentially seed save and bring those back. And we're going to grow that collection for the community to utilize. Next. So just a few highlights. It was a lot. But we thank you again. We welcome any questions. Certainly, I know you have a full evening tonight, so if not tonight, you're always more than welcome to reach out to Heidi or I. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies are obviously very busy catching up for the lost time that you guys worked there.
Exactly.
It wasn't open. So anybody have any questions, comments?
Two questions. Friends of the library, are they still taking donations maybe for the River City?
Absolutely. Yep, they'll probably take up until the week before.
Okay.
Yep.
And then second question, do you guys have a summer kids' reading program thing going on?
Yes. Thank you.
I was like, maybe you said it in the beginning, and I missed it, but.
I may be glossed over.
We always like, no, my son likes, I like to have him participate, yeah.
Yeah, it kicks off June 1st. That'll run through the middle of August. We've got a lot of in-person workshops. We're bringing back some performers, and we're actually going to do two of them out on the plaza this year and two over at City Square Park. So we're trying some new outdoor things, which I think is really exciting, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Thanks.
No question, but just wanted to, you know, commend, you know, everyone in the library for, you know, their passion and being so adaptable and, you know, these, you know, in the past couple of years especially. You know, it's one of those things that sometimes, you know, challenging times kind of bring out the best in us, too, because a lot of the things that we've learned since then, like, you know, as Heidi mentioned earlier, you know, it's like, you know, over 2,000 people attending an event, obviously, you don't usually get that kind of attendance in the library. And if you do, you know, there's not enough room to host it. So, you know, being able to get such like, you know, great reception and engagement from people is just phenomenal. So just, it's great to see that, you know, that people are still embracing the library, still, you know, very much engaged with the library and all the services there. So to see, you know, the future is very, very bright, that it's not just what we've done in the past, but there's more, and it's continually growing, changing, and evolving with the times.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, just thank you for existing. And I love when you said next, the next normal. I think that's brilliant. A strong library is so important. It would have been really easy just to be like, we're going to just do the bare minimum through this and hopefully come out on the other side. And you guys said, no, we're going to be even more amazing, which who thought it was possible? But, and just phenomenal job. The numbers are crazy to see, you know, doubling membership and things like that. So. And I always, you guys have the best presentations every time you guys come. I'm like, you should be in marketing. These are really good. So, but thank you for everything you guys do. It's really meaningful. It makes us a stronger city by having you guys here, and we really appreciate you. So thank you.
Thank you.
You know, one thing I'll mention that they didn't put on there, but they've been a tremendous help on is we have been going through our, obviously, our building study. And so Jody and her team have been very involved with going through the concept planning, which we still have to show you guys the library component of that project. But that's coming shortly, and they've been a tremendous help in getting that together, so.
Yeah, that'll be exciting times, too, won't it, when we get to that phase? Then you'll have all kinds of space to do things.
Just imagine.
You probably won't know what to do. Your creative minds will, I'm sure, figure it out.
Absolutely. Out of curiosity, how much did those two boys raise?
Ah, it was a little over $200.
You are, I mean, you guys really are a true community asset. You enrich the lives of everybody, you know, young, old. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, we're going to do it without our staff for certain. They're pretty amazing. So a huge credit to all of them. Yep.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you guys coming in. And see, you always look forward to hearing these numbers. Year after year are amazing. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alrighty. All right, is there anyone else here for visitor presentation other than our agenda item? Kevin, anybody online?
Nobody online.
Okay. All right. With that, we will move to item seven, approving previous meeting minutes. That would be of the April 18, 2022 council meeting. Again, if there are no additions or corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Discussion. Seeing and hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Moves us to item eight, which are consent items. Again, these are items that don't necessarily need a conversation, but any and all can be, but do need approval by city council. With that, are there any comments, corrections, additions?
Motion to approve consent.
Motion, I'm trying to think of how to do this. I have to recuse myself of item aye, because I am a member of that. So do I, do we, in the motion, make it? Because I'm not making a motion.
We can also just note in the actual vote that unless you're going to not vote for two things, we'll just say you're not, you're not voting, you're voting for everything on the slate but for that.
Okay, so I'm going to take the motion. So I have a motion by Councilmember Hatfield. Second.
Oh, second. Sorry.
By Councilmember Hubbard. And again, I have to recuse, I'm going to vote yet. I'm going to vote for everything minus item eight aye, which I am recusing myself of. So I will be saying yes, but everything but aye. Anyone else have any? Okay, so I have a motion and a second. I'm recusing myself of aye, but all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Clara. And we move to action items. So item number nine is Adopt Resolution 2022-61, approving preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plot for Gallery Apartments.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is an item that's coming to you from the Planning Commission with a recommendation for approval. It's looking at the preliminary site and building plan for the Gallery Apartments site, also known as when we went through the concept phase as the Cloverfield Apartments. These are located basically just south of the Twin Cities Western Railroad tracks and Clover Preserve Drive. And I'll turn it over to Liz for the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. We have a preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat this evening for the project known as the Gallery Chaska Apartments, which were formerly known as the Cloverfield Apartments in previous approvals. And this is being proposed by the applicant Chase Real Estate.
Say, Liz, you might want to pull the microphone a little bit closer.
Is that better?
I think so.
A little louder, if possible. So just to highlight where we are from a process standpoint, we do have three steps within our planning process for most planning applications that come in. We're at the second step in the process. We had concept plan approval previous to this. If this moves forward this evening, it would move on to final plan. So the site in question is highlighted above in the attached aerial exhibit. The site is located within the Clover Ridge Development Area. It is flanked on the eastern side by Clover Ridge Drive. We have the Twin Cities and Western Railroad on the northern side. We have resident, single-family residential and multifamily residential on kind of the northeasterly, easterly, and southern sides of the site. So to get into some previous approvals of the overall area, the Clover Ridge Concept Plan came through in May of 2000, and that's when it set the stage for the neighborhood that this site is located in. Fast forward several years here, when this site came to be in question, back in November of 2021 is when the initial neighborhood meeting occurred that was led by the developer and property owner of the site. And that was, when we looked at the concept plan initially, it was coupled with the Sagewood Third Development. So they did hold a neighborhood meeting together, and that's when the project for the apartment site was introduced. So the neighborhood meeting occurred in November, and then in December is when it came in front of you for both of those projects. So again, Sagewood Third, now known as Oak Creek Now. And then the Cloverfield Apartments Concept Plan were reviewed and approved during those December meetings. And at that time, we did receive, or the developer received, feedback related to the apartment project that was proposed, and a couple of things to work on as they prepared for a preliminary submittal when that came. So one of the pieces was to work on the western facade of the building. There was a large expanse of building facade on the western side, so there was comments to break that up and provide some depth in that massing. Another piece due to the visibility of this site was to provide 360-degree architecture on all four sides of the building. And another piece to work on was at the time of the concept plan proposal, they did propose two levels of underground parking and working on limiting the exposure of that underground parking as a portion of that or a story of that was highly exposed on the western side. Fast forward to April, April 13 of 2022 is when the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat were originally reviewed by the Planning Commission. They did opt to table the item at that meeting to work on a few things that I'll get into in just a mere moment here. So this is the continuation of this item as it did go back to Planning Commission in May. Between that time, though, the developer, who's on the project now, Chase Real Estate, did hold their own neighborhood meeting after the April 13 meeting. So they had their own neighborhood meeting on May 7 of this year to provide the changes that they incorporated into their project as a reaction to the April 13 Planning Commission meeting. And then several days after that, May 11, is when the Planning Commission re-reviewed the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat. And they did make a recommendation of approval at that meeting. So to give you some comparison in terms of where we started from a concept standpoint to where we're at now for a preliminary, so during the December Concept Plan review, it showed a 162-unit apartment building with four stories, a flat roof, and an elevator shaft, and then two levels of underground parking. And that section cut and layout of the building proposed during the Concept Plan are showed on the upper right-hand side. And then as we get into what they're proposing this evening for their preliminary plan, they're showing 175 units, four stories, a pitched roof, and one level of underground parking. And you can see the comparison from a section cut down to the layout of the building as well. So they did change pieces within the building to better fit with the residential context that they were locating in, in terms of the pitched roof being incorporated. And then the layout of the building in terms of a footprint was significantly changed from the Concept Plan, which showed more of a U-shaped building. uh, from the concept plan, which showed more of a U-shaped building, uh, and now they're showing more of an H-shaped building to really break up, uh, that westerly side. Um, to give you more of a zoomed-in perspective of that, um, the comparison of the concept, um, down to the preliminary plan is shown, uh, as well on, as on this exhibit here. So, when the Planning Commission, uh, tabled the item originally at their April meeting, they had a couple, uh, comments, um, for the developer to, uh, react to as, uh, they worked on bringing it back to the Planning Commission. So, some of those comments included, uh, working on the overall design of the building and making sure that it fits into the overall context that it's locating in, uh, looking at the aesthetics, materials and overall colors, uh, fitting into the, uh, surrounding area. Another piece was working on the landscape plan. Uh, at the time that they presented in April, uh, they were well below the ordinance requirements, uh, for landscaping, so, um, making sure that they brought back a plan that met, uh, the ordinance requirements. Um, and if scaling down the building meant, uh, the ability for them to meet that ordinance, um, that was one of their directions. Uh, so some changes, uh, since the April 13th, uh, Planning Commission meeting that has been incorporated into the plans that you see this evening, um, some pedestrian connections have been included, uh, into their plan, mainly connecting the parking lot and the main entrance. Uh, the landscaping now meets the landscape ordinance, um, so they have provided additional landscaping, uh, through the site, around the building, around the stormwater ponds and the proposed regional trail extension that they're including. And then, uh, significant changes have been done to the building's design. Um, so they have, uh, changed, uh, a couple of things as it relates to colors, some elements on the building, uh, to better, uh, incorporate it into the surrounding context. Um, so that comparison is shown on this screen here. Um, they started, uh, with the image and design that's on the, the lower image of this slide and to where they're at now, which is on the upper image. Uh, so the coloring has changed and lightened up. Um, they've incorporated some elements into, uh, the cornice area. They, initially, were proposing some architectural metal siding, um, which, uh, the Planning Commission, um, advised looking at that a little bit further. So, all of the material incorporations that they have now with the siding, it has changed to, uh, LP Smart Sider Hardyboard, um, to better fit in with the overall neighborhood area. Uh, as it relates to the comprehensive plan and the concept plan that's in place out here today, uh, so the comprehensive plan, uh, guides this area to be high-density residential and open space. Um, and when we, uh, look at the details of high-density residential in our comp plan, it does allow for 12 to 40 dwelling units, uh, per net residential acre. Uh, so the apartment, uh, proposal meets this with 31.25 dwelling units per net residential acre on a 5.6-acre site. And then with the Clover Ridge Concept Plan, uh, which is shown in the, uh, bottom right exhibit here, also guides this area to be multi-family residential, uh, which the site is consistent with as well. Um, the property is currently zoned, uh, Plan Multi-Use District Number 15, uh, which is the zoning in place for the entire Clover Ridge area. Uh, there is one provision or regulation within that, uh, that does limit the building height, uh, for apartment buildings to be 50 feet tall. And the proposal is also consistent with this height requirement. Um, as we get into some code requirements in terms of planned, uh, districts, uh, talks about some, uh, development standards, uh, within that, um, and I'll read through those here. Uh, there is a building setback, uh, regulation within that, um, uh, building setbacks from all property lines which form the perimeter of the total property in the PRD or from all exterior dedicated, uh, street right-of-way lines shall be at least 30 feet or the height of the building, whichever is greater. Um, so the building height again is 50 feet tall. Uh, the nearest setback to the property line, uh, which forms the perimeter of the site is 81 feet. And then, uh, there's a provision and regulation on lot coverage, which, uh, speaks to the total ground area occupied by buildings. In a PRD, shall not exceed 20% of the total site area in the project. If the total project is to be staged over a period of time, open space shall be provided so that the ground coverage of any one stage shall not exceed 30% of the applicable site. Uh, so the proposal, uh, is meeting a 4%, uh, lot coverage, um, which is dividing the building footprint by the total area of the site, which is 27.6 acres in size. And then there's a floor-to-area ratio requirement, uh, stating that there shall be a maximum floor area ratio of 0.5. And that is calculated, uh, by dividing the sum total of the building floor area by the gross area of the total site. Uh, so the proposal, um, is, uh, at 0.16 floor-to-area ratio, which again is taking the total, uh, floor area of the building and dividing it by that 27.6-acre gross, uh, site area. And then another provision on common open space, which, uh, takes the unit count and, uh, multiplies that by 400, 400 square feet, uh, which 70,000 square feet would be required for this 175-unit apartment. And they're proposing, uh, well over 800,000 square feet of, uh, common open space. So, that would include their plaza, uh, the trails, um, in the wetland area. So, the current request of, they're asking for this evening is for preliminary site and building plan and a preliminary plat approval for a 175-unit apartment building. Um, again, the total area is 27.6 acres in size, which is highlighted in red here. There is a large wetland complex that has been delineated on-site. Um, and again, the buildable area and where they're, uh, orienting their project is on the northeasterly side. Uh, this, the proposal, uh, and site plan is shown here. So, again, 175, uh, total units on a 5.6-acre site. Um, the main access is off of Clover Ridge Drive, uh, just to the northeast there. So, that'll provide the main access into the, the parking lot area and line up with the main access of, uh, the building there. There is a secondary access shown on the, uh, road proposal, road extension off of Clover Ridge Drive, which ultimately will connect to the Oak Creek, uh, development by, uh, D.R. Horton, uh, just to the west and southwest of this, uh, area. So, they plan to have a secondary uh, access off that point, which would provide more direct access into their underground garage facility. Um, there is a regional trail that stubs off, uh, on the south side of the property, uh, today. So, they will be, uh, extending that all the way through to connect into Oak Creek Drive, which ultimately will extend to Clover Ridge Drive where the existing regional trail steps off. So, this connection point will, uh, provide a contiguous, uh, loop for that trail. In terms of parking, um, they are meeting a 1.8 parking stall per dwelling unit, uh, requirement. Our code does require, uh, two parking stalls, uh, per dwelling unit. Um, however, they have provided analysis to say that 1.8, 1.8 is well above, uh, what they've done in previous, um, projects that they've done across the Twin Cities. Uh, we also have our own analysis from precedents, um, within the community that shows that, um, a requirement or a provision under the two parking stalls per dwelling unit, um, does work. Uh, for example, Lake Jonathan Flats, uh, was approved for a reduction in the parking at 1.7 parking stalls per dwelling unit. Um, and they have been in operation for a couple of years now, and they're at 90% vacancy, um, or occu- occupancy, sorry. Um, and they have shown that, that 1.7, uh, ratio does work over there. And that's a similar product and setup. Um, so we do have precedents to show that, uh, a reduction uh, in the parking, um, can be met. So, they are proposing 182 stalls underground, which is a one-per-one, uh, for their unit count. They'll also have 131 stalls, uh, above ground, uh, which would total at 313, um, total parking stalls. Um, they, in addition to that, they have 215, uh, total bedrooms. Um, we've also seen the ratio work, uh, with a one-bedroom or one parking stall per bedroom, um, provision, uh, which was also looked at with the Lake Jonathan Flats, uh, building. So, that is also equally, uh, in a, uh, inadequate way to review parking requirements. So, they do, uh, above or an excess meet, um, of one-per-one for the, uh, bedroom count on this site. Uh, this is the colored site plan of the proposal. If we need to refer back, just provides a little bit easier read in terms of the different, uh, elements of the site. Um, getting into the landscape, uh, plan here, so based on the, uh, square footage of the building, it requires them to provide 603-caliber inches. Uh, they are, uh, proposing a, a caliber inch count of 636.5, um, which exceeds that requirement. So, that is in the form of, uh, both proposed and existing trees that exist on-site that are outside of the wetlands. Um, in terms of amenities, um, they are proposing a large outdoor plaza area in between the building. Um, and zoomed into that is shown on this screen here. Uh, so they will have an outdoor pool, uh, that the residents, um, can benefit from, as well as some grilling areas, uh, fire pit areas, um, and seating and, uh, an enhancement of, uh, landscaping within that area. And then a couple, uh, site section drawings, just to give an understanding of scale, uh, as it relates to, uh, adjacent, uh, properties, um, in terms of separation and massing. Um, these are the elevations of the apartment building, shown with their, their new, uh, material and color application out there. So, again, the color palette is much more neutral and kind of what you would expect to find in the Clover Ridge Development. And they do, uh, meet our, uh, requirements for multi-family residential in terms of building design and materials. Uh, they've done some analysis as well, uh, to understand some of the context, not just in Chaska, but also in, uh, Clover Ridge, to really pull in some of those elements, uh, from the surrounding area. Uh, so, uh, the elements that you see, uh, within their new, uh, building design was thoughtfully done, uh, to pull from existing precedents within the community today. And then a couple renderings. This is looking from Clover Ridge Drive at the main entrance of the facility, as well as, um, another angle from Clover Ridge Drive looking more northwest. Um, in terms of construction access and where that will go and come from, um, they will have a plan, or they have a plan put together where construction access will be limited to accessing and exiting onto Pioneer Trail. So, that is the least invasive path it can take, uh, to the site and out of the site. Um, and they will have, um, a plan put in place in terms of signage to do so. Uh, so with that, uh, we are asking to make a motion this evening, which would be to adopt resolution number 2022-61, uh, which would be approving the preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plat for the Gallery Chaska Apartments. And then based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. Happy to answer any questions. We do have the development team here if you have specific questions for them. Thank you.
Okay, questions from council, Liz, or developers?
I had a question about snow removal. How, what, how would that be facilitated with, uh?
Do you want to answer that?
I don't know if that's a...
Yeah, I think it's on our, hi, I'm Joe. I'm with Gallery Apartments and Chase Real Estate. There is on the civil plan, there's a snow on, I think on two ends. So, basically, we would plow to either end of the parking lot, and we leave enough green space.
How would you deal with parking and snow removal? Like, how would you deal with moving cars?
Oh, well, we, we notify all of our residents the day before. Yeah, we don't tow our own residents, but we plow to our best. Um, and we also have an enormous underground parking garage. So, any overflow, we usually send them down.
You'd send them down? I'm just curious, because of the, the traffic on the road and everything like that, where would those cars go? You know, if they had to move out of your parking lot, like, how do you strategically do that?
Well, we plow, we'll plow in the morning, and the majority of people probably leave to work during the day. But it, it's something that we manage and coordinate. Uh, if there's some people that go on the street, I'm guessing there will be a few, but if, if there's an ordinance or requirement that, that, we can't do that, we'll tell our property manager. Um, typically, it's not an issue, and we don't plow our own residents in, so we might have to move, plow around them.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you had a plan in place. Just due to the volume of traffic on that road and people working from home, I just didn't know what the plan of action is when it does snow. You know, there's more people, obviously, frequently working from home.
And our parking lots, as I know, because I visit them during the day, they're mostly empty during the day. But I know that we ask residents to move downstairs or, we don't have residents parking in the street, so we will do our best to manage not.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Okay.
How does the underground parking work? Is that a lottery or they, when they, do they pay or?
Yeah.
You have them move down. Well, any apartment I've been aware of, usually those are like assigned parking.
We assign some to two-bedroom units because typically two-bedroom will have two cars, and we have some, we do have some stalls that are called tandems or extra-deep, and they come with storage. But most are, um, come at your own request. And usually, we charge $75 a month for underground parking. On-site is free. Most people love to park their cars. There's also incentives. I mean, most of the time you move into the apartment, you might get a free underground parking stall, um, depending, uh, depending on the time of the year or leasing, but usually they're an extra charge.
Anyone else?
I noticed an absence of a tot lot or a playground?
There is an absence of a playground, yes.
Okay, why?
Um, I know this was discussed at Planning Commission. Um, it's basically because our demographics just don't support the need. Um, I know that one of the planning commissioners requested it. I called our property manager the next day at our largest campus in Victoria Park. It's 462 apartments, and we have four families. And one of those has a child. Two of them are on short-term leases. Most families who have children, let's say, one to seven years old or so, are typically looking for homes. I mean, our apartments are generally for people right out of college, young couples between 24 and 35, and then they disappear. There's not many people in our apartments between 35 and 45 unless you're single and not married. And then there's retirees and empty nesters, usually the first ones to move in into an empty building. Um, so the, the demand isn't there. We would, of course, build, um, a playground to, at the needs of our, and requests of our residents. It just hasn't been there. They want gyms. They want a pool. They want work-from-home spaces, um, and underground parking. And a dog park. Everyone wants a dog park.
I understand that. I also think, looking at our community, looking at Chaska, looking at our demographics here, we do have families that do end up moving into apartments. You have the Cloverfield Apartments. They do have families in them with small children. You also look at the idea that the housing shortage right now makes it really hard for families to, to get into a home, so they may have to hold over in an apartment. I think as the responsibility, um, as a developer, I think you should provide an amenity for parents to have for their children, because the surrounding parks outside of the one over by the elementary school are Jonathan, right? So, we want to make sure that we're providing inside of the confines of the apartment complex, you know, an amenity for the parents for small children. Because you probably, most likely, will end up renting.
No, I, I hear you.
The parents and children.
No, I, I hear you. At Burnsville, to your point, we do have a couple more families and we have like two or three families in a 100-unit building. Normally have zero, to your point, because people can't find homes. So, I don't, I don't like saying, you know, if someone wanted a golf thing in our building, could we provide that? I, I'm happy to say, based on the evidence, if a year after we're leasing or if I talk to Liz, I mean, I'm going to add a... to Liz, I mean, I'm going to add a tot lot or a playground.
I would like to see that. There's been other developments where they've come up and they've said the same thing. It's kind of a real non-starter with me because I live in a townhome. I lived in a townhome for over a decade. I have a son, he's seven. People do sometimes live long-term in places. I understand apartment living is a little bit of a different entity than a townhome, but even in some of the developments I've come across, you see little kids playing out there. And we want to provide like an amenity and a safe spot for parents to go to in order to, for their children to play. And I realize you have a pool. That's a great amenity.
Yeah, we have a pool. We have, they often use our yoga rooms because they're about the size of this whole space. They pull out the mats, so. Yeah, I mean, I just hate to add a cost where, to me, the evidence has suggested, how about to be practical about it? I'd like to go back, I could look where we would maybe put, put a tot lot, as you call it. I've never put a playground in our apartment. I'd like to see what a good design would look like, how much space we would need. I have to talk to architects about accessibility needs, where it would come out of the building. So if it's fair, I could do some research and then when we come back at the next meeting, I can provide more information.
That is fair.
And then I'll do that.
What else?
I have a question for you. I have a question for our staff. We just continue to get emails that, or phone calls that say, I didn't know this was going in. And I feel like we've said it a million times. And I guess I would personally just really like some action to have a plan to say we're for sure expanding how far we send letters, where we are putting up proposed development signs. To me, I'm like, it is, I'm happy to hear your, the reasoning behind not doing like proposed development signs if it is that much extra work. To me, I'm like, we can keep fifteen of them. I realize there's a cost to that, but, and, and space. But to me, it's so easy to pop up a sign that says that and if they have questions, they can go to the website and look at it. So I guess I just need to understand what our plan is because if I get another email that says that, I'm, might just cry.
A couple things towards that. First of all, we are working on a project to bring it back. The plan is to have a joint work session between the council and the planning commission.
When?
It's probably going to be within the next two months. Now, keep in mind, one of the things that's really slowed that down is the fact that our community development staff has just been inundated. I mean, the last few months have been just unbelievable amount of, of work that's coming through. So we're shifting some of that over to different staff to, to go through to put together recommendations. The reason I think it's important to put this as a joint work session between the planning commission and the council is there's lots of things that cities do. But every city that we've talked to still says, you can do all this, but people are still going to come and say that they had no idea. And so what I think we need to do is I think we need to all come to a, a complete understanding about what's reasonable to do and then understand that if we do those reasonable things, we may still hear people come and say, we don't know about it. Now, I can say in this particular instance, people who we received emails from that said they didn't receive it, we sent them a notice. And so I, it's, it's a little tough from a staff perspective to send a notice and then have people come in and say, I had no idea.
When did you send the notice? Did you send the notice back in November or?
So Nate has a sort of a list of.
Well, he had the timeline.
Nate had a timeline that he sent out today that just sort of indicated the, the notices that went out. So my only point by this is it's absolutely critical that we do it. We understand that. Again, some of the delays have been because we have just been inundated with development applications this year and it's, the priority's been on trying to process these, because we only have a certain amount of time to process these applications by statute. We are working on it. It's a priority that we're going to be bringing back to both the council and the planning. But I, I just, I think it's really important to understand that it's not that these notices aren't going out. These notices do go out and the people that we're getting emails from are people that we have, that, you know, we've shown that we've actually sent notices to them.
I understand that and I'm sensitive to how much is coming in. I just, if we keep hearing it, it's hard for me to be like, okay, well, they're sending the notices. Because I'm sure the notices are going out. I just think that we have to be more agile, if that's the feedback we're getting, to say, okay, what are other communities doing that is maybe working better? Obviously, we're always going to get those contacts that say, I didn't know about it, but I just think that there has to be more we can be doing.
There absolutely is. There's absolutely more we can be doing. And that's what, what we're doing now is we're going out and actually meeting with cities. To, to go out and meet with surrounding cities so that we have some, so that we have some consistency among what people can actually expect with the surrounding communities, but then going out and talking to other cities that have best practices. And our goal would be to bring back here, you know, here are the list of things that, that we can do. Here are the list of things that we think we can actually accomplish with the staff that we have. And does this seem like a reasonable place to, to be at from a notice perspective? Understanding that there's still going to be people that are going to come forward and say, I didn't receive this, this notice. And so that's, I, that's why I think it's really important that both the planning commission and the council have that discussion because the planning commission hears the same thing, no doubt. And I know this is a discussion that, that Nate has had with the, with the planning commission too. But it is a priority of ours. Like I said, we're recognizing now with how busy the community development staff is, we got to shift this over to other people to get this done or else it's, it's just, every month gets busier and busier and busier and if, if we don't shift it, it's just going to take longer and longer.
Yeah, well, part of the challenge too is that the longer this goes on without being unaddressed, the more challenging it gets because the churn of people, consternation that's driven by the fact they didn't feel they were engaged, also creates more challenges for staff to address it. So I mean, it's a, you know, it's kind of, it's a self-fulfilling challenge for.
Absolutely. Yep.
So we can feel comfortable saying by end of July, we should have.
Yeah, I mean, our hope would be is that, you know, looking at, you know, where we're at right now, my hope would be is that like that first, sometime at the beginning of July is when we'd actually have a work session between the two. Our hope would be is, you know, I think the planning commission, I think, meets on like the twelfth or something of July. Something like that.
Second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday of that month. Our hope would be to bring, have a work session before the planning commission that night on that Wednesday to be able to bring people together, have that discussion. If it doesn't work beforehand, we'll look for a date that.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth. So that's, that's the intent is to, is to bring it back in a joint work session.
And certainly, I know that a few of us are probably passionate about that. So if there's resources you need or you need us, I'm happy to Google, I am happy to go to sites and look at what they're doing to help solve this. Because I just think for three and a half years, this has been such a, and it's longer than three and a half, just three and a half that I've been hearing it, issue that whatever support staff needs from the council, I'm sure there's several of us, but I'll speak for myself, happy to go do whatever we need to, to make this happen.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, I, I think this is a combination of things. I mean, there are infill neighborhoods in existing neighborhoods. That makes it three times harder. We've got, you know, our current policy is, was it two-fifty or three-fifty circle?
Three-fifty.
It's, you know, really, after it's all done with, that's not very big. But then, you know, sometimes that's what we felt is where the interest is. Once you start going out there, it's really not an interest. And then are you sending things that people aren't interested in? I, I don't know. It's that fine line that we got to walk to try to find something that's going to be beneficial and works. I, I mean, I, I get it. It's, we're hearing that a lot, but then, you know, seeing the timeline of where we sent letters, you know, sometimes it's, everybody's got responsibilities and I don't know how, we have our responsibilities and we're trying to hold to them and it just, I don't know.
We have a responsibility for a good experience for our residents. So that's what I'm saying is that we need to ensure that we can do that. And that's something we, if we're all continually hearing it, it needs to be addressed.
I think, I, I concur with all that's being shared. I think the level of type of engagement that's happening, I think, matters in this regard. I think, you know, flyers in the mail are great, but I also think visual stands are important. I think engaging, because you talk about the busyness of people's lives and just the assumption that, you know, they're not engaged, it doesn't matter. It doesn't really mean, you know, much if they, you know, pay attention to one form of communication versus another. So I think we need to be a little bit more robust in that regard. I actually wanted to have clarification in regards. I know you were not bound to have, you didn't have to have a neighborhood meeting, but you did have one. I want to clarify how that was communicated to the neighboring in that three-hundred-and-fifty foot, you know, circle. How, was it mailers mailed to them? Was it mailers taped to mailboxes? How was that communicated?
Well, we had that planning commission. It was tabled and residents came out. And then there was a neighborhood person who reached out to me and our architect who recommended that we have a meeting at the Caribou Coffee downtown. So we tried organizing that. But I put out neighborhood notices on the Wednesday before, which isn't, I agree, is not the best.
So how many days' notice was it?
I did five of the mailbox.
So you just taped them to the mailboxes and that was it?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, well, to your point of what you were talking about earlier, I called the city because typically it's, what I'm used to in my twelve years of doing this, usually mailers are handled by the city and so I tried calling the offices here to help me coordinate one-hundred-and-ten mailers. I don't know how that works. And we tried to do that on Friday and then I called my land title company on Friday and I can't get mailers out. And so.
Well, I think it's important to point out though, is that we provide addresses to developers.
No, I, I agree.
I mean, it's, to me, the issue here is a lack of time.
Yes, no, I'm not blaming the city.
So I mean, I, I don't want the direction to go back to say we aren't providing addresses.
No, I got your addresses. You are correct. That is correct. I got your addresses and I, I personally was, mailed out one-hundred-and-thirty. Regardless, we had our neighborhood meeting. I put out notices Wednesday. It also went on your Facebook, because I met with someone on Sofia Drive who posted it. I'm not on Facebook. I wasn't able to verify that.
Yeah, and that's a closed, single, I'm assuming your Sofia Drive street is just for Sofia Drive residents, am I correct? Yeah. So you're not hitting the neighbors across the street when you do that, but.
I'm sorry.
I'm not, you're not hitting the other neighborhood, like, in that circle that's right across the street from this proposed development when you do that.
So the five spots I located in my email to Nate was the Sofia Drive, the one that's just northeast.
Romeo.
Romeo. And then the one that's further south of Sofia Drive, there's a mailbox quarter there. There's an, I have those listed. I'm sorry.
Sure.
The five I could find.
How many people were in attendance at your neighborhood meeting?
It was eight, nine or ten.
Okay.
Eight to ten.
All right.
Ten. One child. But I, I don't want to lose sight the fact that the previous owner had an architect, I mean, the landowner has an architect, had a neighborhood meeting in November.
I know.
December, January.
And I, and I understand that you were under no, like, required obligation to have this meeting. I understand that. I had like a pretty robust conversation about that today already. I just think that, like, the willfulness of trying to actually reach neighbors, there was a real loss there. And I think, and this is my own opinion, right, is that sometimes when you go halfway, it's actually more jarring and upsetting than going a hundred percent, right? To have that happen, and I think it's, can be more upsetting to find out things like that than to go all the way. And that's just my own, that's just my own shared thought up here and my own viewpoint. But it, it's kind of a disservice almost, like, to, to the neighbors and to yourself, right?
No, I regret that process.
I mean, you want to be, I'm assuming you had that neighborhood meeting so that you could vocally hear the concerns and be able to address them and communicate effectively to those people that are living and the stakeholders that are going to be impacted most directly by this.
This is the first circumstance where someone had an architect in previous meetings before our team was on board. So I regret not thinking, you know, now there's a face to the developer.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't we get in front of planning commission? The things were kind of already set up.
Yeah.
Yeah, in retrospect, not the smart thing for me and my group to.
I'm looking at you first. Thank you for coming to Chaska. I know we're a hard group. We're a hard group because of who we are, best small town in Minnesota, that's our, that's our kind of thing. And I'm looking at your list of, you know, other cities you're in, so I can understand, you know, these are good cities. Chaska's not like these cities. We're very different. So again, thank you for coming, but I think this is a good message that we're significantly smaller than the other cities you're in. And having a neighborhood meeting, that's an important piece when we're, we're under thirty thousand people here. Every, as you probably saw, I mean, having Facebooks, Facebook groups for streets and things, that's a very more small-town feel. So I think that's maybe just a piece of feedback for you.
So the Facebook was only for the street?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was for.
Yeah. It's just for, it's for one of the streets.
My understanding was for Jonathan neighborhood.
So it's a piece of feedback for you that, you know, Chaska, other towns that are our size are, that's going to be more important. Eagan, St. Paul, Burnsville, those are much bigger. They, not that those residents don't care, but our residents love the city and, and that's probably been what you've seen. So again, thank you for being here. Our feedback is really because of our, our mission to be the best small town in Minnesota and love on our residents and that's what you're seeing here, so.
All right. Any, anyone else got any questions as far as we'll work, continue to work with staff on our notifications? And like I said, as far as the developers, that's, they're never required to have those. We always highly recommend them. And, you know, I, I can see where, you know, it's a little different, beans, he's the second one in on it. Figured there already was one. It just, this one just keeps adding up with issues that are, are different and unique to this particular building. So hopefully, we can continue to move forward, whatever that direction is, and, and figure it out and we'll, like I said, we'll work on our own issues here as, as we move forward, hopefully in the next month or so, month and a half, so. But as far as this site now, as far as the building, are there any other comments, questions, concerns? I just know that in one of them, there was a, a comment about the pool and noise and it says that you closed your pool at sunset? Is that what I heard?
That's true, yeah. Because otherwise, code requires to have an enormous amount of light on it for foot candles. You can't have a.
I, I guess I was very surprised to hear that. So that would definitely take care of some of those issues that.
Yes, close down at sunset.
Is that, that's not, is that city ordinance or is that state or is it?
That's housing code, that's what our managers, that's what we do, one, because our residents want a peaceful place to live, but also I would have to design the courtyard differently to meet a lighting code requirement at night at like ten-foot candles around your pool. You have to have it like a, you probably have it at your public pool and we're not going to have thirty-foot parking light poles around our courtyard. It just, it's not feasible and not wanted, so, yeah.
Anyone else?
So one of the things that strikes me about this particular site is that there are homes like, you know, literally across the street from where, you know, that would be, you know, across the street from where the, this property's being developed. And at least right now, they're at the backs of homes, but they could be the front of homes depending upon what gets built there in the next phase along Clover Ridge. I didn't notice a lot to be done to shield the parking lot in the front from light pollution against those homes that are there, because I know like when cars come and go, you turn on your headlights and you're just shooting right into someone's living room across the street.
You're talking about the townhomes across the street.
Yeah, the townhomes, yes.
I, well, one, there are boulevard trees existing that are quite lush. We've planted a lot more trees for this plan. And I, if we look at the landscaping plan, I do think you have an ordinance on screen. If I recall, there, if you zoom in on the landscaping, there is a, a good deal of shrubbery. I think there also, you have to notice that across the street, the elevation is actually higher by about four feet.
It's garage at the lowest level, right?
Yeah.
So the, the first level is stairs.
Right.
That's in front of the garage behind it and it's not till you get to the second level that there's living quarters on the second and third levels.
Yeah, there's about four and a half feet steps to get to the first floor and then where our part. where our parking lot is another two feet lower than the, because everything's kind of going down, so.
So you're coming in from the. Okay.
Well, no, that their elevation is lower than the elevation across.
Yeah, and I, and I think that, you know, the challenge is that, it's like, because it's, there's still an elevation change, depending upon where that driveway is, you're still be pointing up, because you have to get up.
Oh, are you talking about the driveway then, or the parking lot facing?
The parking lot may or may not, depending upon where you are in the lot. And we had this problem at two twelve when the medical center was built, they did the whole, you know, we did the whole analysis in that cross-section, right? And said, yep, there should be no problems, you know, because it's like distance, we have a berm, we have trees, we have, in fact, even a larger distance with, you know, with a ravine with trees throughout that. But then, after it was built, then the first thing that happened was that as soon as, you know, people started driving the parking lot, parking lot, the lights coming right into people's living rooms in the back. And that was something that, you know, the Ridgeview was really good about, coming back and saying, yep, we're going to address this, we're going to take care of that. But it's much easier to take care of it the first time around before it becomes a problem. So I'm just calling out that some of these things, they look good on paper, but they don't always work out like we think they're going to work out. And that's why I'd like to put a little bit more due diligence into that ahead of time than have a bunch of angry neighbors calling after it's built, saying, what can you do to fix it? And then your options are far more limited.
Well, let me get back to you on that. I believe our landscape plan has a screening hedge of some sort. If not, then I can draw you a sectional diagram that hopefully proves to what I'm saying about the elevation change, but I'll, I'll take a look at that.
But that's, that's a good condition to, to take a look at, because that's a, you know, to his point, that's a good sort of proof of concept is to do a sectional drawing on that, to be able to show exactly the elevation, the angle of the parking lot, and the lights actually going, and where they actually would hit.
Yep.
And I did that math because I thought someone would talk about four stories versus three stories, and because the three-story townhome is up on elevation, my four-story building will almost be as high as the three stories, so.
Yeah, I'm not as concerned about that, because, I mean, you're going to have, like, difference of variation of people looking from one to another, but, I mean, that's, you know, that you can't really avoid, but the reality of parking lights and vehicles is much more disruptive, just because, you know, you have headlights, much more something that, it's not like they're looking into your house, but they're disrupting the light that's in your house if you're trying to watch TV, a movie, trying to sleep, whatever. You know, someone has a four-by-four comes in, you know, lights up your living room, that's not really what you're looking for, to kind of get to sleep and wake up for a six a.m. meeting or something.
Let, let me study that for you, and I'll get you some drawings.
Anything else? All right, I know that we have a few neighbors here, a lot, a few comments. If the comment's already been said, please refrain, because we've already heard it once. So if there's somebody that wants to come up and have something to say, I need to name an address, please, for our records.
Travis Olson, fourteen thirty-nine Sofia Drive. Thank you, council, thank you, mayor, thank you, staff, thank you, Chase. I did provide written documentation for the planning commission, so I'll just touch on the highlights of theirs. And really, the key part there is the history of what was already decided and approved by the city council back in twenty, two thousand and two, that the wetland was to be deeded to the city. We heard the planning commission that there was discussions, and they couldn't do it because there was possibly develop a land on, on, within what was classified as the wetlands. Okay, fine. Decision was made not to do anything about it twenty years ago. Fast forward to this fall, nothing changed within the concept plan, nothing changed, nothing, no documentation was changed within the city's maps to say that there was some develop a land. Now we get to November, and we have this commingled plan between Oak Ridge, Oak Creek, and Gallery Apartments, to be able to do this great plan between the two areas. But nothing was brought up about what this agreement or what the decision was twenty years ago. So the key part there is, we need to be able to hold true to what was decided upon, what was approved, and what was basically told to the city, the city staff, to be able to do, but they didn't do. We need to keep that in mind as we go forward, as into what is the size of this parcel that we are talking about? And I will let the next one talk more about the size-wise. I'll get more into some of the other pieces, which is communication. Councilman Hubbard, you've hit on it, we hit on it, you know, at the planning commission meeting, communication is lacking, and even the communication within the neighborhood meeting was more of a informational session versus a listening session. So it was, it was, they came across as this is what the plan is, and, you know, kind of trying to ease the pain versus listening to us and hearing our, our concerns, it was more of a one-way street. Wasn't until it was pointed out to them did they actually take a note, which was very concerning. From a neighbor's side of things, you know, hearing him, hearing the developer talk bad about the development to the north of the tracks, and about Jonathan Flats, about our already commun, you know, things that either already developed or already approved, you know, talking down to them and trying to build his self-up, isn't kind of the neighbor that we really want to have in this neighborhood. And that's concerning as well, too. It's a matter of, he's looking, they're looking out for their own good versus the neighborhood that they're actually putting the development into. I did touch on some of the irregularities within the civil plan that was presented. There's multiple different versions of a map of, of the parking lot, they cleared that one up in the planning commission that there was no loop on the parking lot, whereas there's many, many of the diagrams show a loop. At this point in time, there shouldn't be this much confusion as into what it is that they're proposing.
What, you, you, I'm not understanding, what loop are you talking about in a parking lot?
So, within the, within the plans, there are certain diagrams that show a loop that is right towards the roundabout, and ones that don't show a loop. So within the, within the civil plans.
Does this plan here tonight show a loop?
No. If you look at the, all the pages of the civil plan, you'll see two versions.
Two versions where?
There are some plans that show a previous version of the parking lot, which they've pared back due to some of the stormwater requirements that they need to meet. So the one that's being reflected in the landscape plan and the civil site plan is what they're proposing.
But yeah, again, just the confusion as into what it is that is actually being presented and requested, because there's multiple versions of the same thing. Also brought up was the open space. So we know that our, within the parcel of land, the five-point-six acres, or five-point-eight acres, there's a huge elevation change from the street level to the regional trail. And within there, they have walking paths going from the pool area down to the regional trail, but within that walking path, they have stairs. Yet again, the, the developer says, oh, we'll look in this, we'll, we'll adjust it, but it's something within, I don't want to say ADA, but within, residents with limited mobility would not be able to use that area at all because there are stairs involved. So being able to make sure that that's, not necessarily, I'll look into it, but, no, you need to address this, and this needs to be taken care of in, in the next step. Mayor, you mentioned something about the, the lights in the courtyard, and I don't remember that being on any of the documentation, which was a nice thing, because it was one of my items as into what about the lights in the courtyard and the pool? Obviously, there was some communication that, that went out that there was going to be no lights in the courtyard, so that's good to hear. But one thing that was brought up at both the first planning commission meeting in March, and then, sorry, in April, and then again, last week, was the tot lot. And you heard his response today, which was, I'll look into it. Well, there shouldn't be a look into it, it should be the, no, that, they need to provide a tot lot. They did it to Pioneer Point for the townhomes, they, the request was there, and it was received well for the apartments to the north of our road tracks, and we hear the response here. So it should not be a, we'll look into it, it's, it should be the, this is what you need to do. It wouldn't be me without talking about landscape and trees. First of all, there's no tree inventory as into what actually is on the parcel of land. There's pictures and diagrams, but there's no physical tree inventory of what is and what isn't, what's being retained and what's being removed, there's just numbers, it's just the caliper inches that they're, you know, they're keeping, but there's no diagram saying which trees, which ones are they. And the reason why I say that is because within the civil plans, on page seventeen, they show a table of the trees that they're going to plant within their parcel, to be able to meet the requirements for landscape plan. If you do the math, the number of trees plus the size of the tree doesn't equal the calipers that they're presenting. Within the table, well, we'll start with one. It says that there's a hundred and forty-eight credit, caliper credits of trees that are being retained. We don't know what trees there are, which ones, what size, it's, it's, yeah, again, not very transparent as into what is being retained. But then what's being planted, the table only actually represents four hundred and fifty-six caliper inches, even though their table says four hundred and eighty-eight. And you go back to Liz's presentation, where they were thirty-six caliper inches greater than the, the requirement, they're right at the requirement for the overstory trees. And if you look further into their landscape plan, they're actually under on the understory plant, understory trees, because it was told to the city that they have thirty-six extra caliper inches, they did more than what was necessary, so they don't have to do as much on the understory. But just look at the math, and it's not adding up, so they really, really need to show the details, because that's, I'm in finance, I'm about trust and verify. You see enough things that just don't add up, and it makes you question what's really trying to be sold here. The last thing I just want to say is, we've talked about lot sizes, twenty-seven acres is the full size, the parcel that they're building on is five-point-six. There's no question that the five-point-six has always been multifamily, there's no doubt of it, there's no question on that. But they're trying to encompass the whole lot size, even though some's already been approved to be replanted to Oak Creek. So it's the, there's a lot of moving pieces within this, as well as the two thousand and two decision to actually deed over the wetlands to the city. So a lot of pieces going on there, and keep in mind that there has been precedents met within the city council of only looking at the parcel that they're building on, at both Jonathan Flats, as well as with Oak Creek, with Costco and the townhomes and everything else, they're only measured on what they're building on, not the total site. So please, take that in consideration as into what's already been decided on and what's been acted on by the council in moving forward to this one, because there are a lot of moving pieces, I get that. But let's make sure we're very clear on what it is that they're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Wade Sorenson, and I live at fourteen fifty-six Sofia Drive. I emailed something in kind of late tonight, I do have hard copies, if I can hand these up.
Go ahead, because we're not going to be able to read this.
Yep, understood. There's a couple diagrams, so if, if, if nothing else, just look at the diagrams on the last page. So, all the residents in the area, again, I want to recap what was said at the planning commission, which was not highlighted before, every resident that spoke was speaking about basically one of two things, the size of the building or traffic, right? The size of the building. This thing is gigantic, right? And do people realize the sheer size of this? This would be by far the largest apartment building in Chaska. A hundred and seventy-five units, a hundred and ninety-two thousand square feet of finished floor space, right? This thing is about four hundred feet wide, so it's almost as wide as the Chaska Home Depot store, okay, to put into perspective, but it's twice as tall, right? This is what, fifty-seven feet tall, to the top of the roof. This thing is massive, okay? So the plan here is to put that building on a five-and-a-half-acre lot in the middle of a single-family homes. Okay, just keep that in mind. Gigantic apartment building in the middle of a five-and-a-half-acre lot surrounded by single-family homes. Is that really appropriate? Is that what Chaska really stands for? I, I kind of don't think so. Right? And again, talking about the size of this building, and what should be appropriately sized for this parcel, parcel of land, right? Everybody agrees it's a five-and-a-half, six-acre parcel land, that's always been planned to be single, uh, high-density residential, an apartment building, right? You can look at the twenty-thirty comprehensive plan, the twenty-forty comp plan, it shows this strip of land on the eastern side of this parcel, and that is high-density. We all get that, okay? Nobody's arguing that fact, okay? But it doesn't show the entire twenty-seven acres, that's, the whole area's not shaded brown as, as high-density, no. Just the eastern portion is five-and-a-half acres of high-density, not twenty-seven acres. So the reason I'm saying this is we get further on in the document, you'll see, I'm talking about this floor-area ratio. And so, when you talk about what is too big for five-and-a-half acres? If I was to buy a six-acre parcel of land anywhere in Chaska, how big of a building could I put on that? Part of the, the F, the floor-area ratio, okay, six acres is two hundred and sixty thousand square feet. I could put a hundred and thirty thousand square-foot building on a six-acre parcel. Here, they are proposing a hundred and ninety-two thousand square feet. So how is it that this five-and-a-half-acre property is able to hold a hundred and ninety-two thousand square feet of building, whereas any other six-acre parcel would only be allowed to be a hundred and thirty thousand? That's substantially different, right? And so you need, you need to get that squared away. What is the right math here? What is too big for this property? A lot of us would argue that a hundred and ninety-two thousand square feet is way, way too big for this piece of property. And again, if they're going to use twenty-seven acres, again, eighteen acres of that should have already been city property. In two thousand and two, two thousand and four, that should have been deeded to the city, but it wasn't, because there was some buildable land on the western portion. That's not being considered part of the high-density housing. That's not part of Oak Creek, it's already been rezoned, why is that considered part of this? I don't know. The other question, if it is a twenty-seven-acre parcel, then what's the required usable open space? Fifteen percent of twenty-seven acres is like four and a quarter acres. So if it's, if it is a twenty-seven-acre property, the requirements for usable open space go way up. So, again, there's these inconsistencies, in some places, twenty-seven-acre property, in other areas, it's a five-and-a-half-acre property. So what is it? And what changed between March, or, I'm sorry, April and May, right? In April, it was all five and a quarter, five-and-a-half acres. They made it a twenty-seven-acre property in order to pass the floor-area ratio, that was brought up back in April. To get past that, they said, well, it's actually a twenty-seven-acre parcel. That is why now, in May, they added in condition number fourteen. So there's a new condition, number fourteen, that was added to the list of requirements that you have in front of you. So the question would be, why was condition fourteen added? It refers to prior developer agreements. My understanding is that has to do with the requirement to deed the wetland to the city, right? That's why, that's allowing them to say it's really a twenty-seven-acre parcel, right? So maybe there's another reason that I'm not aware of, but it looks very odd that that was added at the same time as the size was changed to twenty-seven acres. So at the end of the day, you have two questions. Is it a twenty-seven-acre lot? If so, that's not consistent with what the comprehensive plan says. The comp plan calls for a five-and-a-half-acre lot, maybe six, right? So if it is twenty-seven acres, it's not consistent with the comprehensive plan, and you also have an issue with free, or with the usable open space. If it is a five-and-a-half to six-acre lot, which is what it really is, then the building is far too big. The building should be reduced in size by sixty thousand square feet. That's what you would require of anybody else that had a six-acre property who wanted to put an apartment building on there. That's what the floor-area ratio would say. So, you know, that's the questions that we're bringing up, it all has to deal with the size. We're reasonable, we understand it's going to be an apartment. At the end of the day, just size the apartment for that lot, right? A lot of us have invested a ton of money in this area, and to come in and wreck it with a gigantic building that shouldn't be there just seems very wrong. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So are we out of, are we out of line on this?
May I come in?
Based on numbers?
I can let Mike speak to this, I mean, 'cause we've had, obviously, tons of conversations on this, I don't know, Nate or Mike, if, who wants to talk first, but I mean, this is clearly one that we do not agree with that assessment of how our ordinance reads and what we actually look at. This is a twenty-seven acre parcel, it's all one PID. And, I don't, Mike, if you wanna speak-
Right, so I agree with that, I agree that it's reasonable for staff to treat this as a single parcel. It's one PID. If we wanted to divide this, we'd have to go through the subdivision process. So, it goes both ways, so it exists as a single parcel now. Staff has done the mathematical calculations, so Nate probably can speak to that better. But on the issue of a parcel, it's a, a single parcel.
Mike, I'll let you speak to that.
Yeah, I can, I can speak somewhat, and Liz can chime in too. From the perspective of, you know, the site, it depends on, there's, there's inconci, I'm not, I'm not gonna say inconsistencies, there's differences within our ordinance depending on the type of development that's occurring, the type of zoning that's being applied. Uh, what we're applying here is a planned district, and so we're using that section of code. And for the purposes of what we're talking about here tonight, that ends up being the gross area of the site, which is the parcel, which is that full twenty-seven acres. Liz can talk to the specifics, which she's outlined in her staff report as to how she got to those, you know, those calculations in here. Liz, I don't know if you wanna add any details?
Yeah, I mean, unless you want me to reiterate the calculations that we put together, but as Nate mentioned, as we pull verbatim from our planned development district code, it bases it off of a gross square, or gross acreage of the total site. So when we talk about that, we're talking about the twenty-seven acre parcel. That's where it's deriving from. It's not talking about net acreage, in which case we'd be eliminating the wetland out of the discussion here.
Can I, Mr. Sorensen, can I ask you some questions? Do you mind? I'll put you on spot a little bit, or is it, that's okay with you?
Yep, I'd love to.
Okay. Um, you could've just said to me, "It's too big," I would've, I would've been like, okay.
Well, we've said that a number of times, nobody listens.
All right, this is, okay, we'll talk about that later.
Yep.
So, I guess I'd like to say, why do you feel it's too big? Like, what specifically, and don't tell, say a single number to me, just why do you feel it's too big?
Sure. So this one building, again, I, I referenced the size of Home Depot, and the fact that it's twice as tall, okay? That's how big this building is. This one building spans all three of those townhomes, which those, those buildings themselves are quite large.
So when you said, "It'll wreck it,"
Yes.
My concern is that there are people very much in need of hous, housing like this.
Sure.
And I hope to God none of them ever watch this meeting and hear you say that, because I, to me, we wanna be a community that can house anyone, but, and there are people in their stage of life that need this. And to me, I see a really nice building, I like this building a lot better than the one that was presented first.
Yes.
And I guess I'm just not understanding how it's gonna wreck anything.
So, sure, that's, that's a fair question. And again, I think the quality is good, Chase looks like a very competent builder and a manager, right? Those are positives. What, what our questions and what our issues have been is, is the sheer size of it, okay? It's up on a hill, it's gonna tower down over the whole area, four hundred feet wide, the largest apartment building in Chaska. Would you put that right next to your house? Would you like that to be next to your house? Again, I've lived here for twenty years, eighteen years, on Sofia Drive, right? I've always known there's gonna be an apartment up there, okay? I've always known from the comprehensive plan that it's generally five, six, maybe seven acres. It's, ends up being five-and-a-half acres is the actual lot. City code, for so long, has said it's fifty percent of the lot size is what the building square footage can be, sorry to use numbers, but I've always known as resident that there are controls as far as how big of a building could go there, okay? So even though, yes, it's gonna be an apartment up there on the hill, it's not gonna be some twenty-story apartment, it's, it can only be four stories. It can only be fifty feet tall, well, fifty-seven in this case. You know, there are controls to how big it can be, so that, you know, the overall aesthetics of the neighborhood are not terribly impacted. And to the other question of the, the definition of, of the floor area ratio, I would encourage you to look in the city zoning definition, where it says explicitly, for planned developments, you use the net site area, okay? That's explicitly in the definition.
I think we need to make a clarification, though, is that the zoning on this site is what, PMD fifteen? That is the zoning for this site. There is different sections that deal with general zoning, there's different sections that deal with planned unit developments, and there's very specific ones that deal with specific zones. So this is PMB fifteen, that is the guiding zoning for this site. So to take something general out of the code and try to apply it to PMB fifteen is not correct.
No, but, can I address that? The, the issue is, the floor area ratio, right, is, is applicable, right? Everyone agrees that the floor area ratio is applicable.
It's applicable, but I think as Liz said, in PMB fifteen, it's based on gross acreage. On the site, it's not based on net acreage.
Okay. Okay, well, that's not what the definition says, but fine, I, I will accept that.
Again, we have received counsel from our attorney on that.
But, but in that case, what about the open space? What about usable open space? Twenty-seven, twenty-seven acres, what's fifteen percent of that?
Usable open space is based on the total site acreage as well. But in terms of what's needed for the site, they're meeting it.
So the total-
For this caliber of product and how many residents they're gonna have, the usable open space meets the, the site that they're taking up within that twenty-seven acres.
So here's the issue, right? In one case, it's twenty-seven, in one case, it's five-and-a-half. So, all I'm asking for is consistency?
It's never five-and-a-half, it's twenty-seven.
I was gonna say, it's, we were told it's twenty, it's twenty-seven.
It's twenty-seven, it's gross acres, it's one parcel, it's a PID. So there's no confusion on that, it is twenty-seven acres.
I think it's fair to say you feel it's too big, I think that's, I think, I'd like to validate that you feel that way.
Yeah.
Uh, I, but I do think, you know, it, you said you knew there was gonna be apartment building there, right?
Absolutely.
So to me, I'm kind of like, if we could, there is, too big, to me, I'm just like, okay, it's too big, probably a lot of things would, when you don't have it there, feel too big. I guess if there was some, I'm looking for something more constructive, if you think, like the tot lot, that's constructive, we can ask for that. The, I think Mr. Olson mentioned the stairs behind, that's, that's constructive, I can, I can get behind that. So I think just too big, I'm like, great, I, I don't know what to do with that, especially when we, you know, we're within what we can do. So, is there any other feedback you have that we can tangibly do anything with besides it's too big, and again, I don't wanna hear any numbers?
So, I mean, the structure could be reduced in size, and you could still have a quality building, right? That there's not, to make it a hundred and seventy-five units is substantially larger than any other building in Chaska, apartment building in Chaska.
How many does, like-
But, but don't you think that that's kind of a argument in the sake of, like, they could make bigger units?
Sure.
And make less units, but never change the size of the building?
And that's why my argument has been on the floor, the floor squi, the, the floor area is my main argument here, right? That, that it's, it's too large of a building for that size of property. Any other six-acre property-
It's not six-acre, you gotta get it straight.
Sure.
Twenty-seven acres, so we're staying, you gotta stay there.
It's twenty-seven acres now, but then eighteen acres should've been city property already, and four are going to Oak Creek.
But I think, one of the things, I think-
It's not twenty-seven acres.
One of the things that we gotta keep in mind-
It's zoned differently.
And Kevin talked about this back in November, uh, when we went through the concept plan, is the reason that that wasn't dealt with at that time was because there was-
Yep.
The apartment building site. And there was a knowledge that, that we needed to deal with the whole site all at once to be able to, you know, to be able to appropriately utilize the site. I mean, Mr. Benson and his father-in-law have owned the site for forty years, forty years. And, I mean, I was here when, you know, when this, this all happened, I was here in the meetings when Sofia Drive was platted. There was a, you know, the reason that that wetland donation didn't occur at that time is because the apartment wasn't going forward at that point. It was guided to have an apartment, but it wasn't donated because it was gonna happen at a future time.
So, so Matt, I have to correct you on that. Okay, you and I had a meeting with Nate and Kevin Ringwald, right before he left. We were talking about that very question, and what Kevin brought up was the fact that they found additional buildable land. It wasn't the apartment site, it wasn't that five-and-a-half acres, what they, what they found was the western side.
Well, and that's the, that's the property, that's the property that Oak Creek is using now for those single-family homes they're allowing.
That is what triggered, the finding that, finding out that that property was buildable, that's what triggered them to say, "Hold on, we're not gonna donate the wetlands because it's, there's more over here." That's what Kevin said.
They didn't know that was, they didn't know that was buildable until they were pursuing this, the project with Oak Creek.
No, no, you guys have the document. Two thousand and four, you guys sent me the document that shows the wetland delineation, and it shows the buildable land on the west side. You, you guys knew it back in two thousand and four. I mean, come on.
I'm gonna get back and forth like here.
I, I mean, that's what you guys sent me, it shows that, and that was the discussion that we had. So, the city knew, nothing ever changed in the comprehensive plan, but-
But the, but the fact remains, it's a twenty-seven acre par, parcel, it's always remained in the ownership of one owner, it's got one PID, and the zoning is very clear on how we address that.
But last month, didn't we just rezone the northern four acres? Wasn't that rezoned?
Yes, it was, it was.
Yes. So, it's not twenty-seven acres, it's twenty-three.
Well, look, I know Liz said that she looked at it with and without.
Yeah, I mean, even with the twenty-three point six acres, if you take out the four-acre Oak Creek portion, you're still meeting the floor-to-area ratio-
Sure.
...requirements, and the law coverage requirements for the total site area, so-
But what about open space? How about usable open space? I mean, twenty-seven, fifteen percent of twenty-seven acres?
I mean, again, if, if, if we want them to go back and meet on the total site acreage of the site and provide a five-acre, whatever the calculation is on that-
But realize-
They can, they can try to do that, but I, I would say from a staff standpoint in terms of what they are providing, it is adequate to serve the needs of this project.
One final comment, the usable open space, usable open space requirement, you cannot include wetland in that. City code explicitly calls out wetland. So if you're gonna have a four-acre chunk of free space there, there's no place to build this apartment. Again, I, I would, I would encourage you not to consider it a twenty-seven acre property.
But I think we have to, 'cause it's legally defined that way.
Yeah, we have, it is, that is what it is.
Like, I have to do it that way, right? I, 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 not just a per-
No, excuse me, it's two separate legal descriptions that are one parcel. And that happens all the time. You have commercial parcels that have three separate legal descriptions, but there's a building across all three because it's one parcel, it's one PID. So, I mean, I just wanna be clear on that. So, you may, you know, you may argue that it's two separate legal descriptions, it's two separate legal descriptions, but there's probably plenty of narrow lots in downtown Chaska where they might've been, you know, built for a shot-down house, and when those lots sold, they built a house over two lots. And you find that in a lot of communities. That's treated as one parcel even though it's two separate legal lots.
There's statements of fact and there's statements of opinion, right? So statements of opinion, statements of fact, for example, might be the area, the ratio of open space against the allowable open space requirements, right? Now, maybe something that, you know, if it's, if it's not within that, I'm certainly not gonna support it because it's gotta be, stuff like that's black and white, right? It's either gonna meet it or it doesn't. Now, the thing that always bugs me with, like, a lot of developments in general is that there's this kinda games of, like, play it here, if I play it there, to try to make it match, and that never sits well with me, because then we ended up encroaching on open space or taking more parking lots or more spaces to squeeze in a bigger building, you know, that's always the goal from a development perspective, you know, maximize your square footage. Now, I'd like to see a clean view of this where it's the, you know, everything's just really transparent, right? You know, what, exactly what's trees are coming down, exactly what's trees are staying, exactly, you know, what's the open space, it's, you know, not playing some games, but taking out the stuff that's gonna be houses and streets for the other side, okay, so it's twenty-three point X acres, exactly what's left, does it meet the ratio or not, right? And if it's within PID fifteen, that's great, you know, then it's all within those boundaries. That should all be completely black and white, right? Statements of opinion are things like, is it too big for that property, even if it's legally within that? That's certainly welcome to debate that, and I'm kind of a little bit on your side on that, it's like, it's an awfully big building for that size, you know, as an opinion perspective, right? And, in the, and, and it's, as much as I do wanna add more housing to that area, you know, it's gonna have a discernible impact, I mean, I understand the traffic studies, you know, and I've read plenty of traffic studies over the years, you know, there's gonna be, there's definitely gonna be impact. Is it too big? I don't know, I mean, I think it's a little big for that area, but, you know, what size is, right? I think that developer certainly has a, has a reasonable financial motive to make sure they build something big enough that they're gonna have an ROI that's reasonable, right? And I think it's gonna be something that, you know, from a development perspective, there's a balance, right? The more they can build, the better the affordability may be because they're building more units, right? If they build fewer units, they're gonna force to put those into more of a luxury category, which is gonna make them less affordable, and it sort of undermines some of what we're looking for in terms of, you know, creating more affordable units. So, there's a tenuous balance in this, right?
Absolutely.
You, you know, and it's not that we, you know, wanna say, we wanna shove in, like, as many, you know, as many, um, units in there at the lower end of the range that we can, and, you know, and try to, you know, flood the market there, but, you know, we're trying to make sure that there's a healthy balance. I'm up for that conversation because I think it's, it's a good, healthy conversation to have. My personal opinion is, that's a little on the big side, but I still think that there's, I still think the developer, you know, is trying to build something that's within the community, that within, that fits within the needs of the community here. That's a, you know, it's, the things that we do need to clean up are, there's, there's still plenty of things on the fact side that need to be cleaned up. The traffic that, that's always, even though there's fact around the analysis, that's always still debatable, because the debatable part is what's gonna happen tomorrow, because you don't know what's gonna happen tomorrow until it's built, right? So, I think that from my perspective, we've got a, there's a lot of cleanup that needs to be done, you know, looking at the civil plans, you know, like with the loop in the civil plans, I don't feel comfortable saying yes on the civil plans because, like, I'm saying yes on civil plans that are there even though that's not what we're really proposing, right? So that doesn't quite sit really well with me. But, once we clean that up, okay, I, you know, we're all clear and this is exactly what we're voting for, that's completely fine, because then it should be just a black and white decision of, it's in ordinance, it's in statute, everything's lined up, and then it's a question of, does it have, like, a tot lot, does it meet the, you know, light restrictions, and then meet all the things we're talking about? Is it too big, or is it right for our community? And those things are things that are much more negotiable, perhaps, right? So that's my two cents.
I guess, I guess I'm a little confused about, I mean, we do have the civil plans that are being adopted in there, I guess, I, I'm confused about this notion that there's two. I think Liz put in civil plans to show what was there and now what they're proposing.
No, it's, there's different, there, as you scroll through, some show a loop and some don't.
Mm-hmm. The parking lot differentiates on a couple civil plans.
Yeah. I, I-
Yeah.
This end right here is the loop, it's as straight as a street line there, so this is consuming this whole, that's on that corner right there.
Inconsistency in the plans that they submitted that I think can easily be remedied with the final submission.
Mm-hmm, right.
But it's been very clear to us from the developer that they're intent, that they're not building a loop, they're building the version that was presented in Liz's presentation.
I know we're taking comment, I will point out that there's a hand on the screen that's up. I, I'm fully aware of that, I wanted to finish this conversation. Yep, just wanted to make sure. And Kevin and I have been reminding each other not to forget. I'm just trying to figure out this inconsistency in the civil plans.
I don't know if you heard what, what Nate said, he said that that's something that would have to get resolved for the final plans.
Okay. And, you know, that's why we're at this phase, we look for these things and point these things out, so thank you for bringing this up.
That's, bring it in the civil still, though.
Good. All right, I, Kevin, why don't you bring on, it looks like Beth Sanchez, please? All right, I, Kevin, why don't you bring on, it looks like Beth Sanchez, please?
I'll give yourself, and also just make sure to state your address. Hi, my name is Beth Sanchez, and I'm on Sophia Drive. Just a couple of things to note. At the planning commission meeting, I did note that Liz said that this is in accordance with the twenty-fourty plan, and the road to the south of the railroad tracks that connects with Romeo has never been a part of the twenty-fourty plan. This is brand new, and an asset that you invented when the summary of this project is given at the beginning, and that wasn't done this time. I'd like to address the no notification as well. I did receive notification of the planning commission meeting in April. I did not receive any notification of the planning commission meeting in the rain. As a neighbor here, I printed off and just printed fifty flyers, just stating the facts of the apartments, and the time of the planning commission meeting, as well as ways that neighbors can tune in, and I knocked on almost all of those fifty doors, and I talked to a lot of residents. So, you want to know about any feedback? You know, the city said that there'd be about a hundred and ten, or, I'm sorry, when you guys were talking about neighbors, I think the number quoted is about a hundred and ten. Well, I just read about fifty of those myself to let people know about that planning commission meeting coming up. And I will say that there were language barriers, where people did not understand what was, what was going in. I went all the way up to the ridge, I went all the way up to Romeo, and the residents I talked to Romeo had said they had no idea what was going in. They were opposed to it, they were concerned about the traffic. They wondered if there wasn't enough housing already, but the apartment complex went into the north of the railroad tracks, as well as the townhouses. And then, again, there was the traffic concern about the roundabouts in the schools. So, if there are any other questions of input that people had, I would be happy to speak more on that, but that was my experience. And I, I told people when I talked to them, I had, I wasn't trying to influence any opinions, I was trying to provide facts. If they had questions, I had been to the minute meetings since the beginning. I'd be happy to offer any needed information. If they wanted my opinion, I gave it, but otherwise, I refrain from consulting until asked. I will also note that the townhomes that are directly across from these developments, most of them are not built yet, and are not occupied. And so, you know, if we're looking for input, input from those people, they're not here yet. So, I feel like the rest of us have been speaking on there, I have so far, because we've been dealing with this with the D.R. Gordon stuff for so long. Again, a notification as far as the community meeting with the developer. He left, like he said, flyers at mailboxes. I wouldn't have known about the meeting had a neighbor not posted it on our neighborhood Facebook group. That was the reason why I thought about it. Myself, my husband, and my seven-year-old daughter were three of the eight to ten people that were there. So, that would put things in perspective for you. I know another, two people who were there were a husband and wife. I think I counted in my head about eight people who were there. And I don't think there is anybody there who wasn't on Sophia Drive. So, as far as people knowing and thought that meeting, when I was talking to people as well, trying to let them know about the planning commission meeting, it didn't seem like people were aware of that community meeting that had been scheduled. And then, the final thing is that I do walk there quite a bit, daily. And the, there are no crosswalks that are painted right now, and so it's kind of a lewd situation with roundabouts. And so, I would just ask, you know, going forward, that whoever's in charge of making sure people, the crosswalks are painted in appropriate places. In addition to that property right now, there's some dead end trails going down to it. It's, it's kind of like a dog. It's a place where people let their dogs go, and they don't pick up after them. And my kids and I have experienced that, and so I would just say that I have already called the city and asked if we could put in, you know, some garbage with the dog bags there for people to use. And I was told it would be put in, and it didn't, so just something else to be aware of, like, if that regional trail is going to be connected. I really think that we need to do some diligence on that, not where people are going to continue to just bring dogs down there and not clean it up. So, I don't, does anybody have any questions about the residents that I've asked you?
I, I don't think so, but I, I appreciate the fact that you went out and, and you did some posting, and so, maybe in reality, more people knew than what we feel knew. And, you know, we greatly appreciate that fact, and, and that you're carrying some of their concerns forward, so. As, as far as the crosswalks, we can always look at that. Crosswalk's got to be, like you said, in the appropriate places. You don't want crosswalks where they're, you know, not, the drivers aren't expecting them, that's, that's an accident ready to happen, so. You know, some of that can be looked at as we look, move forward, but that's, I, I believe that there are trails on both sides already. Somebody help me, I've driven there, I've looked at.
It's a sidewalk on one side, oh, there's sidewalks on both sides, and then there's a trail that goes down.
Down, yeah. Because I was going to say, I.
And that trail hasn't been connected because that parcel hasn't been built on yet.
So, you know, it's not like they have to cross somewhere to, to be able to walk, they still can walk both sides. But that could, that is certainly something that can be looked at. That's, that is, is, is certainly not a, not a bigger issue, but we can look at that as we move forward as well, so. I don't know, does anyone have any questions for Beth?
Just, just a clarification, Beth. So, when we're talking about, like, for example, like, the, you know, like, there's a, there's a circle, there's a roundabout around Walden Drive and Clover Ridge Drive, right? So, the, I think, I'm guessing what you were talking about is that there's, there's, the sidewalks go right up to the curb, and then there's actually islands in the middle that you can actually hop across, but there's no markings going to those islands. So, the drivers see, oh, there's no markings, I'll just go straight through it, rather than actually seeing a crosswalk marking painted in between those islands, where there's actually a safe spot to stand. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, just like up front, like, if you have the whites first, green and orange, there's, there's nothing there right now for that. So, you're playing leapfrog. And then, in the wintertime, the, the snow clearing there is absolutely horrible, where everything gets pushed up, so you're having to jump snowbanks in order to cross roads. And again, I call the city every winter on this, where the regional trail would get plowed, but then the sidewalk to the east side, going up the hill, never gets plowed. So, it's literally like playing frogger there, too, where you walk here, and here, and here. And Benson hasn't cleared the sidewalk there in I don't know how long, so I called that a year or two. And this winter, he said he would clear it. But it's just, it's just kind of been a peaceful disaster at this point. So, my husband runs it every day, and he'll end up running on the street, and that's what I frequently see. Our runners on the street, even though we have this beautiful trail, it's, a lot of times in the wintertime, not cleared appropriately. And then, yes, getting from, so they're, what they're telling me is, well, you can walk here, and then cross the street here, walk here, cross the street here. And that's great, but there are no crosswalks painted, so. It's just an interesting situation there. We're talking about putting this apartment complex into the south, coming to the north, we have other townhomes. And then, I apologize, I did forget to address the size, so when it was, when Wade was asking, what is the appropriate size? I mean, the townhomes there are three levels. And I don't think that anybody in the city would get the three level apartment building to do in there at, you know, at the, at the size that it's already at, at three levels instead of four. I don't know that anybody couldn't live with that, but you're talking about putting in a four level apartment complex, so that's going to tower over the, the townhouses that are already there. And if you've walked or driven this recently and thought about that, it's literally going to be a corridor where the sun won't hit there. It's, it's, it's just ridiculous. When you ask, what is reasonable without any numbers? I, to me, a three level apartment complex is reasonable, and it's not, for me, as much about the number of units, but about the size of it anywhere. Sorry, I forgot.
Thanks. So, I think this summarizes the, the pedestrian piece that we need to clean up, is that the sidewalks give pedestrians the sense that it's a safe crossing there, because there's built-in curbs going along it and leading into it. But then, from a traffic perspective, there's nothing leading drivers to think that you should watch out for pedestrians, because there's nothing marking it saying there's crosswalks, so.
Yeah, I can check into that one.
Yep. But yeah, but thank you for your comments on that.
Thank you. I have one other person on Zoom, and then I'll come back over here. And then, probably going to be last comments.
Hi, go ahead. There you go.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening, city council members. Greg Bumper, I am thirteen fifty-five, Romeo Court. And I talked to Beth last week, and I decided to participate in the planning section last night. And some, one of the council members here tonight said, more units, more affordable, more traffic. And when I heard there were going to be some three hundred and thirty-one parking spaces to this Clover Ridge apartment complex, I wanted to get some perspective on what that really means. So, I counted the number of parking spaces in the front side of the toilet seat store. Up to that little corridor that runs through the parking lot, you can kind of visualize it from behind. How many parking spots do you think are there? Any idea?
No, but we'd love for you to tell us, seven hundred.
Five hundred, five twenty.
I think we're right away to five hundred and thirty-five parking stalls. And all of a sudden, it started hitting me that approximately sixty percent of that traffic, or reasonable acceptance of that level of traffic, will be living in my neighborhood that I live one block away from the intersection Romeo Court and over with the track. So, that encouraged me to ask for a copy of the often referenced traffic analysis that was prepared by Vernon Swain. I think he's calling himself principal in here, if I remember right. And it's dated February twenty-fourth, and I'm sure he reviewed that several times. And I'm sure the planning commission has also reviewed that several times. I reviewed it several times again, for the first time, truly nice. After reading it, I sent Mr. Swain, Mr. Swain's moving, several questions which I asked or responded today at noon. I didn't hear from him. Then I realized he produced this report from D.R. Gordon. So, I'm not expressing. One thought is, it looks, looks for accuracy of this information, this first thing. And I'll cut just as three points, and three points only. If we proceed with this plan as this traffic analysis dictates, you would be approving a plan that is not accurate. To me, that's like a surgeon applying surgery without accurate information. Can you be more specific, Greg? Sure, let me do that. In Mr. Swain's report, he indicates there are three developments. You know that. And that the Clover Field, you know, you have Clover Field apartment, you have an apartment of a hundred and sixty-two units. I believe that number is one sixty-five, one seventy, excuse me, one seventy-five. So, there's eighteen units that aren't accounted for, the rest of eighty percent. So, right there, we're at eighty-eight percent. I'm not going to comment about the other two units. The Oak Creek had a hundred and three. I don't know if that's right or wrong. Nor do I want to comment about the Clover Ridge apartments listed here as a hundred and twenty. I don't know if that's right or wrong. But if one's wrong, can't start building the other two or also wrong.
But would it be fair to argue that they could be wrong lower?
I don't know, but that.
It is the same argument you're making, though, right? Just ignore those other two plans.
I think on the Oak Creek, they ended up with eighty-some units.
You know, Oak Creek, Liz is a hundred and.
A hundred and two.
Hundred and two, and the study was at a hundred and ten.
It's a little bit less.
The study was a hundred and ten?
I'm just saying what, repeating back what you said.
That's my answer. That's, thank you for clarifying. Yep.
Oak Creek was one hundred and, Clover Ridge was one twenty. Clover Field was one sixty-two. And I'm reading right off the report. So, if that's accurate, I'm all for it. The other thing, two more points. The other thing is, I find it extremely unusual, this four and four traffic study was done one day. One day out of three hundred and sixty-five days in a year. It was done on Wednesday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. What was the weather like on that day? Was it snowing, was it icing? For the people, I said, you know what, the road conditions are invisceral. The drive was a bit off-aid. I don't know.
But they could have been dry on a nice day, so I mean, that's speculative. That's, we got to get, we got to get the facts.
So, it was actually the day we had thunderstorms in December, that whole day we had. So, not that weather. It was easy Google.
I think it's important to understand when those traffic analysis are done. They are done by the developer. They're responsible for getting them done and for getting them paid for. What we do then is we turn those traffic studies over to our city engineer and our consultants over at StanTech to look at them and, and review them and say, does that look reasonable to us? So, I mean, it's, yes, they are done by the developer, but they're reviewed by the city engineers.
Oh, the city doesn't support any accurate data? Is that what they're commenting on?
Can I just, I got a comment, because I, I, well, first of all, I'm just going to make my opinion known. I came late, because I had a family child who was sick, and I had another child. So, I'll just put it out there, I'm, I'm not going to vote, I'm going to recuse myself on this vote, because I missed the first half, and it's only really, I feel, I've read the material, I have an opinion. But I will just say, like, this has been the most frustrating forty minutes, I think, I've sat here, because we've had people, not, no offense, I'm going to say, like, we put you on the spot, and tried to blame the city for not sending stuff out, and a hundred and some mailings, and then we got accusations of, like, misleading. Like, we're here for the same purpose. Like, I get it. Like, I'm getting frustrated with, like, questioning the weather on the report. Again, it's fair, but like, I can question the same numbers. And I just want a per, per perspective here, that no one's trying to cheat anyone here. We're, we're, we're consulting with our lawyers, we're following our ordinances. The neighborhood means well, I get that. I very much appreciate the fact that they're involved, because it's much easier to have the conversation now and prefer grounds it to dirt. But I, the tone of this conversation is very frustrating. Because numbers get thrown out, I feel like I got to be like a fact checker in the background here. There's speculative, speculation of weather, and one report, and all that type of things. I, I, I just, I'm, I'm, this, I'll be honest, this is the first time in my years here that I've felt this frustrated about how this conversation's gone tonight, and I just want to put that in perspective. It's easy for me to sit up here and say that, because I've already said I'm not going to vote on this, because I don't think it's fair that I was late coming in, and didn't get to see the presentation, even though I've read the material. But I just want to remind us why we're here and what we're doing, because it matters. The community members matter. It matters to communicate effectively. That matters. Some of this wouldn't have happened if we would have communicated better. It matters to be accurate with data, right? And putting numbers out there that, you know, I got to quickly look and, and feel that fact check. And I understand opinions matter, too. But again, I, I don't want to rant for two more minutes, but I, I just got to the point where, just like, I wanted to say that, to kind of just level set us again here, because we're getting very speculative, and throwing out numbers, and guessing, and weather, and I just want to say, we're, we're all here trying to do the same thing.
Yeah, we are.
And, and so, I, and I appreciate everyone's involvement, but I just really want to remind us the tone here is, no one's trying to accuse any, it feels like we're trying to accuse other parties, and I just, I don't think that's the spirit, and it hasn't been the spirit up here before. That's my opinion.
I would have to say, I agree with everything you just said. However, where I'm looking at it, acting as a citizen, as arguing, that when I refer to a concern about potential traffic incident, and I'm totally, totally the traffic analysis more or less, which I have now gotten, and I see some things that don't look accurate, I just ask myself, are we making good decisions for the safety of the community? And I think the answer is yes, but I think we need to find the council members that are clear about it. I'd like to see the traffic report moved up.
But Mr. Butler, three units? But Mr. Butler, three units is gonna make or break a traffic study? And our job is to make our best decision. We're your neighbors too. Our job is to make the best decision we can. Where, this information is going to change before the next final approval. So this information doesn't stay the same. Each time we see it, it's gonna be different. We're gonna give our feedback on it, and it's gonna change and then come back for another approval. That's how this works. So splitting here is over three units, I think, is just, if there was, if it was a much bigger difference, I would a thousand percent agree with you. So I would think it was very important to bring up. Since we see traffic studies fairly often, three units.
And all three units combined is a difference of three units, is that correct?
I'm just saying that, I didn't look at the numbers. As I said before, I'm not a big numbers person. I'm, I'd rather hear your concerns without numbers. That, to me, works. But when we looked at it, there was not that much of it, there's not a difference. I guess we're splitting hairs again, kind of like John was just, or Councilmember Grau was saying, over something very small. Your concern is traffic. I think that's a valid concern. We hear that.
Well, I'm sorry, but I don't think it's three units. The report says one sixty-two. In reality, it really is, we're looking at one seventy-five. That's thirteen, or eight percent.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. The last thing, I'll make it real quick. And I'm sure you all deal with this day and the hour, but there's a section in there for traffic report that's called the twenty twenty-five build condition for anticipated traffic by, or one year after the developments are complete. But that's twenty twenty-four, I guess. I don't know how that works. Does that mean that one hundred percent of the apartments and the homes will be fully occupied for that entire year, twenty twenty-five, and that's how they did the analysis here? How does that work?
So the analysis is attempting to find a reasonable time at which you may expect full buildout. It's not to say that that is exactly when that's going to occur. There may be a few years on either side of that as to when that actually does occur. But it's attempting to establish the impact of full buildout on the traffic system. The conclu, the conclusion in the staffing, or I'm sorry, in the traffic report is that upon full buildout of the, of what's being proposed, that the traffic system would be able to handle the traffic generated. So whether that's twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-six, or, you know, a couple of years either way, the point of the conclusion is that the traffic system can handle the traffic generated.
Give us the numbers that you correct. Just want to be sure. The number's there, you can correct it. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, Jennifer Stoltz. I live at two nine zero one Clover Preserve Drive, so I'm one of them that is right across the street from the proposed site. I did want to say, I did get the notice on the April thirteenth. That was mailed out. I couldn't make that planning commission meeting because of a prior commitment. But that is, for this apartment building, the only communication we have ever received. And I've lived there since twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen, sorry. The things I want to talk about are the traffic. The cars speed by already way faster than the thirty miles an hour on Clover Preserve. With the elementary school, Clover Ridge, three to four blocks away, it's already super congested. The traffic analysis says approximately fifteen hundred more cars. I'm, I'm not normally a numbers person either, so I get that. But that's a lot of additional cars, and it said that eighty-five percent of those cars are expected to go to Pioneer Trail. In reality, that is not true. Unless they're going to Victoria or Waconia, they are gonna go on those residential streets of Clover Ridge Drive, Clover Preserve Drive, and Hunter Mark.
Again, that's speculative, because, I mean, if, if I live, if I was gonna go there and I'm going to Target, why wouldn't you go Pioneer?
Yeah, when I drive it, I immediately...
I, I'm in Clover Ridge all the time. I got kids that live there. No way in the world would I want to drive through there when I can go up Pioneer and over and around. So your opinion, my opinion. I just wanted to be clear.
That's fair.
We've kind of been that opinion thing. We have to be clear. We're basing it on numbers, what they say. This is how people, there are the people that know traffic.
Right, and that's fair. That is fair. I just know I always go up Hunter Mark. Fair enough. Not gonna split hairs. And then I just also want to reiterate, I'm a lifelong resident of Carver County. I have seen Clover Preserve, or Clover Ridge, Clover Field, go from the farmland, complete farmland, to what it is today. I'm all for growth. None of us are saying that growth is bad. We've all known it's gonna be an apartment building. But with this being as large, I'm not gonna go into numbers again. With it being as large as proposed, would you really like that in your backyard, knowing traffic and children's safety is an issue? There have been cars that have gone through that roundabout right at Clover Ridge Drive and Walden. They've just gone straight through it. It's dangerous. Would you want another fifteen hundred cars there a day, with little kids riding bikes and walking to and from school? Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. All right. I, I think that we've heard it very well. I think that's everyone that's here. Uh-oh, Jeremy.
I know, I know. I'm gonna make it quick. I'm gonna make it quick. Jeremy Lancamer Ely, I live at thirteen sixty-eight Romeo Court, and I have just three very quick points to make. One, I think that it's important that the council understands that, that the tension for this is likely due to the sensitivities of development and the lack of radius for notification. You're talking about Pioneer Vista Development, you're talking about this, you're talking about D.R. Horton, you're talking about Sagewood, all this happening on land that no one lives within three hundred feet of this land. So all of us aren't getting noticed because I live literally four houses and one townhome away from this, and I wouldn't get noticed, and that's okay because it's not within statute. So I'm glad, I applaud the work to really address this as a city. Secondarily, I would like to know, a little bit to Greg's point, how I, as a citizen, can work to advocate for the safety of these kids crossing the streets in the morning and after school at Clover Ridge? Because I live there. I see it every single day. I know, I don't know how to read a traffic study, but what I know is that eight AM, I'm in line and there is a pinch between Clover Condos and Cloverfield Marketplace, and I'm backed up. And I see kids that are going across, and I worry about that just continuing. And then when you get on Hunter Mark and Cloverfield Marketplace is across the street, there is no fence to stop those kids that live in Cloverfield Marketplace from running across the street where there's no, there's no crosswalk. They shouldn't cross there. And the poor school patrol and Nate, they do their best, but we've gotta do something. We've gotta help this, and I feel like part of it is the burden on our poor schools of saying like, yeah, we want you to install a fence that looks nice, but they don't have the money to do that. How, how do we advocate as citizens to help bridge this gap with development for these common sense solutions that we need? And then lastly, I live in this area. I know this is gonna be apartment. I don't think the building is too big. I think four stories is exactly what we already have with Clover Condos and building A of Cloverfield Marketplace, so it matches. I think the developer did a great job updating the aesthetics and three sixty architecture. Look forward to seeing more details on the landscaping plan that can maybe cosmetically treat what people perceive to be too big. That's all. Thank you.
You know, one thing I'll mention on the Cloverfield School, we have met, met with Nate Slendy, the principal up there. We actually met right before COVID, so it was probably, that was probably the wrong time. It was probably the wrong time to meet because then nobody went to school after that. But we talked to him about, we have a program called Safe Routes to School, and one of the issues that we have there is that's a high drop-off school as far as the number of parents who actually drop their kids off at the school. And so, I mean, I was part of it. I dropped my kids off there. The, what the issue is, is that we have, we need to split the traffic. We need to have the traffic that's actually coming from the north actually use that north parking lot. And we need to have the traffic coming from the south actually use the south parking lot so that they're not commingling where those buses are coming out of the lane. So that is something we're working with Nate on and looking at doing a study to say, how can we effectively split that traffic there? Because you're absolutely right. I mean, that is an issue.
Yeah, that, that's, that's been an issue there for just a long time.
Yeah.
And, and that's just one of them that, I know Matt had told, we had talked about this, that we know that that is a problem area anyways, even before any of this stuff. And we were already working on, but...
Do you feel though, with the timing of the northerly apartment building and this one, if, you know, pass through, that, that should be a priority for, I mean, because I don't know, build out, but I mean, that really needs, I mean, we've been talking about it, but really...
Well, one of the reasons though, that we, we needed to wait for things to get closer back to normal is we need to understand what are the daily traffic patterns? Because we're still seeing it. I know Nate goes up to Lockademia. They've had an unusually high number of drop-offs now. And a lot of it's been because of COVID and kids and parents not wanting kids to go on the bus. So we want, also want to make sure that we get it right. And we don't want to have skewed data based on what sort of remnants of, of COVID. So we want to make sure that we get the right timing on when we're actually doing this study, but it's not far off.
Right, but like, what would be the disservice of like, what would be the disservice of doing it now when it's high? And then if it does decrease, that's just all the more safety measures put in place, right? Like, what is the disservice of doing it now?
It's, it's trying to accurately predict, where should we sort of create that dividing line between where we want people to drop off on the south side and where we want them to drop off on the north side?
Let's, maybe, we're getting away from our issue.
I know, I, I get it, but like, but the trap, but traffic is, traffic is a concern. It's a concern.
I, I totally understand that, but part of this is, there's an issue there. And it's been an issue there, and are there gonna be some more cars? Probably, but I'm not sure that there's gonna be a ton of them either. I, again, that's speculative, because I don't know. I'm, I'm basing it on a study that says most will go to the north. But it, it is something we have to square. I, I get it.
Right, I get...
I, I, but I, we've got people waiting, and we've got this one been here, and we keep kind of wying off. And although they're related, but I think we need to stay kind of focused on where we are on this item. If I'm, if I'm wrong, I'm more than willing to, to keep at it.
I understand.
But I, I just feel that we need to focus back in where we're at.
You know, I think that, yeah, it's been, you know, two and a half hours nearly. But it's important. It's important. It's impactful, and there's a lot of different moving pieces with it. There, we may have gotten lost into the details a little bit at certain times, but there was a lot of important details. I, sure, in my opinion, I'm struggling. I'm struggling really hard with this. I'm not struggling so much about the stories. Four stories seems okay with me. I'm, I'm not even struggling so much with the size because I know apartments are needed. I know my Sophia Drive residents are probably not happy about that. I'm really sorry. I looked at like the length of field away, and I get it. It's gonna impact. It's gonna, it's gonna impact, you know? And it's gonna feel like a negative impact, and I understand that. I, I do, and I respect that. I'm struggling with just feeling a little bit boxed in, just in conjunction with the D.R. Horton. And I was kind of like looking back at my notes from the concept plan and seeing the original neighborhood meeting. And you're talking about the communication, right? The communication piece. The original neighborhood meeting was done in conjunction with D.R. Horton's development. I think that was a disservice. I think there wasn't enough time spent on the apartment, and there was a lot of time spent on D.R. Horton's Oakwood. And I look at the notes and some of the questions and answers that were addressed at that neighborhood meeting. And it makes me struggle because like, building heists were said to be different during this neighborhood, original, original neighborhood meeting, even originally the concept meeting, and they're different now. And I get it's a pitched roof to match the decor, and I think, to your credit, you did a very fine job of taking those architectural details and improving them. I do, would like to see a Todd Lot in there. But I'm struggling with the communication and the communication of the neighborhood meeting that happened to me. I get it, didn't need to happen. It wasn't a requirement, but man, it was like the listening piece of it, because there are stakeholders that live there and that are impacted, whether it be traffic, look and appeal, property values, everything. And so it makes me struggle when I look at this whole thing. And I think the apartment's needed. I am not opposed to the apartment. That's the thing I struggle with. I'm not opposed to the apartment. I'm opposed to how we got here, how we got here, how we got here from point A with it being kind of latched into D.R. Horton's Oakwood concept. And I get it. I get, I get the opportunity. I get why that happened. But I struggle because maybe I put, I put blame on myself that I didn't ask enough questions at the very, at the concept plan. You know, with this going forward, because there was no developer attached to this. And now we're here, and it's been bad communication, not bad, sorry. Could have been improved communication. Wasn't a hundred percent. So I don't know. That's, that's where I sit with this. But anyways, if someone else wants to share an opinion or ask, go for it. Keep listening.
Anyone?
Okay, I will speak, not in a ranting type, it's just my opinion. Again, I just, like I said, because of the nature of the conversation and the fact that, like, I wasn't here, I am not gonna, I'm gonna recuse myself from this vote. I think it's only fair to both sides, truthfully, since I wasn't here. I do have opinions on it. I, I do think that's, I, I struggle a little bit with the communication. I don't need to hammer that again. I just, I, I think you're right on the fact that some of this tension this room has experienced tonight over the time, I think, is a, it, you know, in my career, it's also a lack of communication too. People, when they don't have information, we tend to make it up and, and fill it in, and that's not by, you know, nefarious reasons to do. We just, that's our human nature. We, we fill in with what we think's gonna happen, schema, right? You know, I, I, I trust the traffic studies. I think, you know, I, I do recognize it's an interesting spot to put apartment clause. I actually think it's a really good spot to put an apartment complex because you're right. It's, you know, the conversation about would I want that in my backyard? The reality is, is that for a lot of the residents that are here speaking, it is a distance away. They're gonna see it, but they're not walking out and it's there. Because that could happen, and that does happen places, right, where it is literally right next to you. So you have a unique opportunity with that space in that wetland to put a complex like this that doesn't, you know, encompass a fully surround housing development. I, I, I think it's been tough in this neighborhood because, to your point again, there's been a lot going on. And change is hard, and especially when we don't think we know change, or we're community about change, we get frustrated. That, you know, I will comment, you know, feedback for the developer some, you know, as you work and experience, I think you clearly understand the importance of communication at this point. I don't need to say that again. You know, I also just comment, just a little bit of, you know, and it was highlight a little bit of the neighborhood meetings, a little bit of the sense of openness to listen versus openness to tell. And I think that's a, that's a skill, and, and I'm not accusing you by any means of that. I'm just saying that's a balance, right, when you're having those conversations about, am I listening or am I telling, right? And you, you know, what I heard is a lot of what felt like telling. Your intent might not have been that. Probably wasn't. You know, we talk a lot about impact, intent versus impact, right? So I just think that's where we get here, is just, we just, in many aspects, we fail to communicate effectively across the parties, and it caused a lot of stress. I think it's a good plan. I think it, it, I like the, the look. I like the pool, truthfully. It's an amenity that there's not a lot of options in the, in the, in Chaska currently that offer that. I like the trail system, and, you know, in the day, what many other council members said, there's a demand for this. There's a need for this in our community, and that's important. You know, and I look at it and ultimately evaluate it as... and I look at it and, and ultimately evaluate it as, is it good for Chaska? And I do think it is. Um, so those are my thoughts. It doesn't change my opinion on what I've decided to do tonight for this, just because I want to be fair to that. Um, but, and I hope I don't surprise, didn't surprise anyone in the council with that, but I planned on being here, just family didn't plan accordingly with me, unplanned events. So, um, but that's my thoughts.
I mean, I think we've kind of covered everything. Uh, we can't go back and fix it. I'm sincerely sorry for how things have gone personally. Do you think it's important? I mean, I already spoke to the developer and said this, Chaska is a different, we're a different breed out here. We, uh, so I think it's important not to be, um, flippant in the decisions we make. Uh, I think the size works here. Truthfully, nobody would, I mean, if we could all live in a giant field, we would. Um, but that, that's just not what we get sometimes. I think that, uh, I really like the look of it now. I'm, I'm glad that that look changed. I think it fits a lot better. Um, I think it'll be good to further understand, uh, the landscaping and how that's gonna go. Um, I think making sure where you build something that's accessible is really important. Um, so I guess I didn't even realize and notice the steps out back, but, uh, it is important that we, people can move. Um, and we are far too often dis servicing people with mobility issues, so I would like to not see that happen any further. Um, but otherwise, I think that kind of covers it. So, that's my thoughts.
Okay. So, I think my thoughts, um, overall, you know, this is a much superior design compared to the first thing we saw back in December, January of this year. So, this is kudos to, you know, you guys for putting together something that from aesthetically, it's a lot better, has a lot more dimensions, a lot more, um, um, composition. Uh, the massing's better because of the way it's broken up. Um, that said, still feels a little big for that site, that site and or at least like with that proximity, but although it is pushed back and compared to what it was before, it does feel kind of a little big for that space. Um, traffic's still a concern, you know, that's got to be addressed. Um, you know, accessibility of trails, accessibility connectivity, you know, one of the things we pride ourselves on this community is trails and that connectivity. So, making sure that everything is accessibly connected is absolutely critical. Um, you know, because we don't want there to be a situation where people use the trails but can't because it's just not reachable for them, right? Um, some of the items we talked about, like, you know, whether it's the steps or the tot lot, tot lot in particular, I don't have a particularly strong opinion about the tot lot, other than the fact that if we do believe that it's something as an amenity would be valuable to the residents of a community there, because we will have, you know, families, even though I understand you're marketing towards millennials and to those who are, you know, baby, baby boomers.
Millennials have families.
Millennials have families, right?
Some of us.
Or may have families while they're there, right? You know, there's.
You're an older one.
There's that, right? Um, that when, I mean, I spent like nine years in the planning commission, never once did I see that, oh yeah, we're going back and adding something later. Never see that happen. And so, it's like, it either gets built now or it never gets built. It's always, I mean, it's just like the honey do list at home. There's always that thing that never gets done until you eventually move to a different house, right? That, that's one of those things I fear it will become. So, um, so things, I think there's a number of those items that, you know, if we don't address them now, we have to do it. You know, we do it now or it never gets done. Um, and also, the, one of the things that really, really, really is super important to me is just transparency, you know, is accuracy of plans matching what we're talking about, right? You know, and that's just a very basic thing. Um, if we have an ordinance, it's black and white. Um, I don't want to be obfuscated in numbers and have to play some guessing game to figure out, either from staff's perspective or from our perspective up here. It needs to be just clear as day, black and white of like, here's the ordinance, here's what we're doing to match it. That simple, right? Um, and then like things like, you know, the tree audits, for example, you know, it's, I think, you know, when we do this, and this is not unusual at all. I mean, there's plenty of other developments where we spend like two and a half, three hours just talking about three trees, right? I mean, be prepared, just saying. Um, it's like, well, you know, because we do scrutinize at that level, because it's important to us as a community. I mean, it really, really is important to us, which trees are important. I mean, if there's a, you know, a big oak tree or something that we feel like, yeah, we want to save that tree, we're going to be up here talking about it for a while, right? Um, but I think it's important to at least get this information out there upfront. Let's talk about it. Let's work through it. You know, we want to work with you guys. We want to like make sure it's a successful development here, but the fastest way to get to the finish line, which I know you guys want to get to the finish line as quickly as possible, is just put all the information out there, put it out there in front of us, put it in front of the residents, make sure we're listening, because the, the quicker we can incorporate feedback from those who live nearby and get it to everyone who lives nearby, gets us to the finish line a lot quicker. Otherwise, I've seen a lot of other developments stall or have to go back to the starting gates, because, oh, a bunch of residents didn't hear about it and now they're coming in like the 11th hour, whoa, that doesn't work for us. And it's not just like a couple of us, this is like 50 people kind of us, right? And then now everyone's starting over again, right? So, you know, I think we all want to get to the finish line, because, you know, I'm sure staff does, I know you guys do, because that's, that's your life, right? So, let's get to the finish line as quick as we can, but like, let's do it right. Um, and then, you know, I think that it's, you know, I think that the, one of the things that I encourage is that, you know, cooperation and transparency, right? It's collaboration. We'd get a lot more done if we're at the table talking. If there's a group of residents, like I've seen this in other neighborhoods, a group of residents who come together and kind of represent that, you know, the larger group and can, you know, share, communicate information and then have meaningful conversations with you guys. You can hash out a lot of stuff and get to an agreement before staff even hears about it. Then by the time you come over to staff, it's like, yeah, we got this figured out, right? If we're in that zone, we'll get there a lot faster. So, that would be my recommendation. You know, and I've seen in other neighborhoods, um, that's, you know, if you guys, the better you guys can partner, you know, the more likely I am to say yes, if I'm hearing from the residents nearby, that, you know what, we're okay with this. And then you guys are saying, yep, we're okay with this too. Staff's on the board. That's a no brainer for us and I want to be in that no brainer phase. That's simple.
All right, um, closing, I just want to say thank you to everyone that's been involved with this. Uh, I, I still believe that's what makes these projects better. Um, I look at the comments that came out of the previous meeting from council and from residents, they clearly made those changes. They went from a flat roof that many people didn't care for, went to, they lowered, because then they went with the peak, they lowered the building down, they did, they changed the color schemes, they did, they, they pushed the building away from the trail. Uh, I, I think, me personally, looking at the landscape plan, there's a lot more trees there than there was currently, um, but maybe I wasn't looking at it right and I was maybe looking at the opener. But regardless, there's a lot, they're putting a lot of trees back and landscaping back and there's a few things that need to get looked at. I'm sure could be worked out in the final, final, uh, plot process. But, and as far as the initial part that council member Hubbard brought up, I, I, I don't blame the owners of the property to have that as part of, of, uh, that, that D R Horton, because it changed and they had to make sure that they still had that plot that was there. And that's why it was then along with that. I, I, I understand that. And you're right, it didn't have a, a developer at the time, but we know what the housing market is right now and we all said, there's, there's a need for apartment buildings. And once that, that was finalized, I think that that's what brought the chase development as, or in as, uh, as, uh, as managers and builders of it. So, I, like I said, I know that we're having issues about the size of the plot and all that, but we have to, we're following our legal counsel, we're following what we believe is our ordinance is read. Um, I know that we can split hairs on a lot of things, but we're following. I, I think the building, I, I've driven there about four or five times and, and many times just passing through there, but there, there are very large, three plus story buildings, not but a block and a half from there, by crow fly, less than a block, that all around the monument signs that there's, there's huge buildings there. So, I, I don't really think that this building is completely out of line there in any way. Um, I was worried when I saw it go to a flat roof, but then, and I realized they dropped a story and a half, that makes a big difference. So, um, I, I just think that there's been a lot of give and take and I think what all of us sitting here and everybody out in the audience wants is a quality project. And I, I think that this, right now, what they're doing, I think is a very quality project and I feel comfortable with it. So, that's all I'll leave.
I should clarify that, well, maybe not having the neighborhood meeting combined was a bad idea. I, I think the, maybe the loss was that when the developer was attached to it and it became more real and more specified, that maybe we should, it should have been rounded back to have a little bit more clearer picture of the neighborhood meeting of just that particular project. I think when you lump two really big projects together, you're talking about a large neighborhood and then single family homes and then you're talking about a four story thing that doesn't have a developer attached to it, your mind isn't necessarily focusing on B, it's more focused on A, because A is more real. So, um, maybe that's my clarification on that.
All right. Which blisters?
Well, I think it needs to get put up for a vote, so.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2022 dash 61.
And I'll second.
Sign of motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Hubbard. Again, this is adopt resolution 2022 dash 61, approving preliminary site and building plan and preliminary plot for Gallery Chaska Apartments, Chase Real Estate.
To clarify, since I've made my announcement, I'm recusing myself. Just don't say anything? Do I say that I'm recusing my vote from this or just not?
Hey, you can just say abstain.
Abstain.
Yeah, is he abstaining or recusing? That, isn't that different?
Well, he's abstaining from the vote, vote. He didn't really recuse himself from the discussion. He's not, he's not legally conflicted out. Um, it's his personal choice not to vote.
So, does he just not? So, he, he would be in our official records abstaining? Okay.
You can make that an option at the vote and.
What's that?
You can say abstain and then you can say aye and that could be part of the record.
Yeah, you can.
I mean, you know.
Well.
Not trying to be difficult.
If legal says it's okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Because that's right, I'm not sure. That's one of them.
That's why I wanted to ask, because I.
No.
I, I think abstain is the best, um, for the record.
And when we call for the vote, you can say abstain if you like. And then it's very, very clear. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Abstain.
All opposed, same, same, now I'm confused.
Was I supposed to say?
No, you're fine. It's me. Uh, opposed, same sign. Vote and carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Do we have a quick recess?
Uh, just a real quick.
Yeah, like just a quick one.
We just.
You've been sitting here for three hours.
Give us. Thank you for that short recess. Uh, all right, we are back. Uh, we're on 9B, adopt resolution 2022 dash 63, approve preliminary plot for the Idle House Jonathan Association.
Mayor, Councilmember, this item is coming to you from the planning commission. Uh, the Idle House, as you know, is on the north side of Idle Road, uh, when you come off of Hunter Mark Road. Uh, Jonathan Association is looking at dividing this off so they can sell, uh, off the, uh, the Idle House itself, along with the, the portion of the property that they're not going to keep. Uh, Liz is here to make the presentation and, uh, answer any questions. And we do have a lot of people involved with it right there.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, thank you, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start this presentation. Uh, so as Matt mentioned, we have a preliminary plat in front of us for the Idle House being proposed by the Jonathan Association. Uh, so the site in question is highlighted in blue in the above aerial. Uh, so today, uh, there is one existing outlot, uh, which is highlighted in blue here, which contains, uh, the existing Jonathan Playground as well as the Idle House. Uh, so those are all, uh, under the same outlot that are owned by the Jonathan Association. Um, this is located within, uh, neighborhood eight of Jonathan, uh, just to give you some context. So, right off of Idle Road. So, we have a single family residential, uh, surrounding this property on all sides. Uh, the Idle House is locally designated within the city of Chaska, so it has a long history within the community. Um, it was built back in 1806, uh, 1876, um, and it's composed of Chaska brick, which is a significant architectural element, um, of Chaska's history. Uh, it's been owned by the Jonathan Association for several years. I believe they've owned it since the year 1967. Uh, before that, it was owned by prominent families, uh, within the community, um, and, until it was passed on to the association. Um, currently, the, the home is vacant and unused, uh, so hence the kind of significant, um, desire to get it sold off to someone who will be willing to, uh, occupy it and maintain it, uh, so that it can be preserved. Um, in previous years, it has been used as other association functions, uh, such as a daycare facility and a co-op store, uh, up until the early thousands, until it was, um, uh, vacant as it exists today. Uh, the site that, uh, the home is located on, uh, as long as, or as well as with, uh, Jonathan Playground is approximately point eight acres in size. It's currently within our planned residential district, number two zoning. Um, the house, um, exists mainly on kind of the, the northern portion of the site, um, and, uh, kind of abuts that, uh, easterly property line. Um, there is, uh, the playground that's on the southwest portion and there are Jonathan Trails that, uh, encompass a portion of both the playground area and in front of the Idle Home, which connects them to their overall system, just to the east there. Um, the site in question, which they're plating, contains a, a number of outlots, um, that they'll, uh, replat, uh, with this overall plat. Uh, so there are three outlots that can, that contain this overall area, uh, from neighborhood, the neighborhood eight plat. Um, there's a couple outlots, um, kind of on the southeasterly side, uh, that can, are composed of, uh, the Jonathan Trails. Uh, Outlet K is what contains the existing Idle House and, uh, Jonathan Playground. And then there is one outlot, uh, in the rear portion of the site. And then there is one outlot in the rear portion of the site, that was a part of the Tuscany Hills plat, that would be incorporated into the plat. So what they're requesting again is for preliminary plat, they'll have to come back for final plat, but the preliminary plat approval would be for one lot to contain the Idle Home, which would then be sold off to a, someone who's interested in restoring the home. And then there'll be two outlots as a part of the plat. One outlot would contain the existing Jonathan Playground, which would be owned by Jonathan Association, and then another outlot would contain the existing Jonathan Trail system on the southeastern side. So how that kind of separates the overall area, so Lot One, Block One, again, would be the lot that would contain the Idle Home. Outlot A, adjacent to that, would contain the Jonathan Playground and be retained by the Jonathan Association. And then Outlot B would contain the existing Jonathan Trail system that exists out there today, and that would also be retained by the Jonathan Association. So the purpose of this plat, again, is to separate off the Idle Home and the yard space around it for someone to come in and occupy and own the building in hopes of being able to maintain it and preserve it to its historical integrity. This is just a more simplified view of that, showing the lot and outlots within it. One of the things that they looked at as a part of this preliminary plat application is the potential of adding a detached garage on the site. One of the unique things about the Idle Home property is that there is no garage that exists there today, so it is a, an appropriate application to try to figure out where a garage could go on the property. Really, the option that they should and have to explore is a detached garage option, given the local historic status of this home, is the more proper way to provide a garage option is to provide a detached garage next to a historic property. So they are showing up to the max limits of a zoning allowance for a detached garage on this site, and they're also locating it as westerly as it can go on the property before the property starts to drop off from a topography standpoint. So they are pushing it back as, as well as they can, while also trying to maintain the viewpoints into the site so that it's not blocking the Idle Home directly. There are some challenges just with how the home is situated there, but just from a concept standpoint and what has been reviewed by HPC, this seems to be the logical approach. Another item to note is there is a windmill on the property today. It currently exists where I'm putting my cursor, so kind of on the southerly portion of the Lot One, Block One area. And unfortunately, you know, locating a driveway and a garage on there, it's pretty inevitable without impacting it, so there is evaluation on potential relocation of that windmill on the site. So some of the review that we did give back from HPC did really center around that concept plan, and again, they didn't make any formal motions related to that. This was purely to provide feedback, which, when the Jonathan Association produces some marketing material for the property, that they can disclose that within, within the comments there. But some feedback that they wanted to provide to any future property owner of the site surrounding the concept plan is making sure that they provide for a design and a plan of the garage that takes into account the overall size of it, the scale of it, and materials to really fit in with the historic home of the Idle House. They also did touch a little bit on the windmill. They do believe that more has to be discussed about the windmill in terms of the details of it, details of it, the structural integrity. It's really unknown at this time if it can sustain even being relocated on-site without it being either a nuisance or a hazard for a potential property owner.
Is that protected under historical two? I mean, I'm just questioning why there would be any consideration of relocating it versus keeping, is it protected too or not?
The nomination form is a little unclear in terms of the historic status of the windmill, so that's why we are stating at this point that we need a little bit more information to review that. You know, I think with anyone who thinks of the Idle Home location, they do think of the windmill, so there is some significance of kind of what it provides for that site, but there's, there's some details that we need to have explored first to really understand if keeping it is in the best interest of that site and overall community of what we're trying to preserve out there.
Thank you.
So with that, we are asking you to make a motion this evening to adopt resolution number 2022-63, which is approving the preliminary plat for the Idle House addition, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that resolution. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise we do have representatives of the Jonathan Association as well.
So a quick question, so based on the kind of the awkward sort of hourglass shape of the lot, is there, would a variance be needed for the garage based on the sort of proposed concept location?
Technically, no.
Okay.
The way the lot is oriented is you can have a detached garage in the side yard, so it can be flush with the Idle Homes. It just can't be more forward than the Idle Home. In this instance, this is what we consider the front here, and.
Where are you pointing here?
Right here.
That's the front of the, that's the.
That would be the front yard, front lot line, and so in essence, the Idle Home is more forward to that line.
Because the front door is actually.
It faces this way.
Yeah.
It is that way. Oh, I was thinking it was going out the end.
Yeah, so basically the garage would actually face towards the front door of the house?
Right.
Okay.
And that was intentionally done to really open up this area and kind of push the garage back as much as possible and expose this elevation so that more of the decorative portion of the garage would be exposed and that the doors would kind of be oriented inwards.
So the side yard setback is five feet, right?
Correct.
Okay, five feet for side yard, fifteen feet for back, right?
Correct, I believe so, yep.
Yeah, so obviously, back isn't a problem, but, so it's five feet, so, and then what's the, what's the distance between that and like the nearest neighbor?
Well, Chatfield Court goes right up to it.
Yeah, no, but I mean, in terms of the actual structure, you know, I'm just kind of wondering, because, so actually, it's not, it doesn't look too bad, because there's a, they were kind of off diagonally from where that would be, so it wouldn't be like it was right on top, and then we have them like.
And.
Well, that's a big space.
We don't really need to have a conversation with them because there's no garage being built at this.
Correct. They're showing something conceptual that would meet zoning, but the size of that could very well change and actually be smaller than what we're seeing just from a scale.
I just want to make sure we weren't looking at putting something out there conceptually that we immediately need to turn around and get a variance for if we, if they sold the property and got what you're looking for. So this is one of those things that, in theory, they could just like run with the concept and said, yep, good, I'm gonna buy the property, don't need a variance, that's what I want to build, and then just submit some permits.
They will need a site alteration permit, so there is a process that they do need to take in order for them to get a detached garage approved on the site.
So if someone purchased the property, because this is kind of a little odd compared to like other developments where you're actually, you know, having to propose and go through preliminaries and other stuff because it's residential, if someone said, okay, well, I'm gonna build a garage, you know, because I'm gonna live there, they wouldn't need to go, would they need to go through the preliminary and final plating, or is it?
No.
So there would just be, it'd just be a permitting process?
Yeah, so the Jonathan Association is taking over the plating portion of it so that they can effectively sell off the Idle House lot.
Yep.
So the property owner wouldn't need to come back for that process, but if they wanted to build a detached garage on the property, they will have to go through site alteration permit with our Heritage Preservation Committee. Yep.
Because that's a Chaska historic, did I cut you off? Sorry.
That's okay, you're probably gonna ask a question I was just about to ask.
Well, because that's a Chaska historic house, does the garage then have to go through HPC?
Yes, yep, so.
So it would have to be a garage that would complement the house?
Correct. That's why they have that process, so that they can more effectively review the details, the construction, the massing, all of that.
So that kind of leads into my question, is the implications of the historical nature of the home dictate the outer?
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Okay, and then, I feel like you kind of said this, but maybe it's, is it gonna be, so is this being done before it's sold? Is anything being done before it's sold, any?
Nothing's being constructed.
It's being sold as is, hopefully with this, okay.
Right.
Got it.
Basically, the concept proposal is a tool to allow Jonathan to move forward with marketing this, so that way then, anyone who buys it knows this is my clear, you're blessed by the city to go build that if that's exactly what you want to build.
So, but you will build a driveway? Nope, that'll just be set up for them to build when it's purchased.
There is one thing that we need to do.
You gotta come up here.
So, there's one thing that we need to do, there was an action from Planning Commission, and that is basically we need to connect what is now existing, the Jonathan Trail, to a safe entry into the top lot. So think of like a sidewalk running along Idle Road, we need to do that because that trail connectivity doesn't exist today, and we need to connect that top lot from the trail to the top lot.
So, and that's what you'll have to do prior?
That's the one thing that, that the Jonathan Board will need to approve that work to be done, and we're gonna take care of that, but other than that.
Do you remove all the old trails, or is that their job to?
Nope, that's ours. Yep, there aren't currently a lot of trails on the property.
Well, there's, I mean, all the low paves.
There's kind of a stubout and.
Yeah, there's a lot of them, but I don't know where they all go.
We're really, I, I mean, it's our intent to sell the property as is to a preservationist that's gonna want to come in and restore it to a single-family home. That was, it just, a very brief history, about a year ago, the board authorized the creation of the Idle House Committee, that's comprised of board members, community members, as well as a member of the Heritage Preservation Committee to explore the options of what to do with the Idle House. We have about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our reserve fund for the Idle House. Unfortunately, the structural work that needs to be done to the Idle House is going to eat up all of that and leaves nothing additional to make it a usable space for our members. So then we held a member listening session late last summer at Idle House, and it was overwhelmingly, the response from our members were, if you can preserve the house, don't tear it down. We don't want to see it fall into further disrepair, and so the decision was made for us to move forward, replat it, and sell it to a preservationist to restore it.
So I think that answers my question, that can't be torn down when new halls built there.
Correct.
Not without following.
Not without the HPC approval, but, again, it's very, very discouraged to even explore that route.
And it remain, it keeps its historicalness through anything that stays.
Correct, yep.
I think I went to preschool there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I went through there and it was set up sort of like a school.
I'm pretty sure I went to preschool there. I'd bet my mom will text me in a minute and tell me if I did or not.
Did you went to preschool there too?
I didn't go to preschool. I went to college there. See, what they do, they pick on me all the time. I was in there for some event though, but I don't know. It wasn't preschool.
High school party.
Huh? All right, we got this solved, all right. Any other questions? I, I think, pretty straightforward, I, I like the fact that the idea is to preserve it, it's a very unique setting, and I was a little worried about, I know that the garage was just looking at it, but I know, I'd make sure that Chatfield's involved, but that'd be when the garage is built.
I have one more question, sorry.
Yep.
When you sell it, are you gonna make sure someone's gonna love it? Because I'm gonna be sad if someone's like, okay, I, I mean, I wouldn't blame them, but like, I just think like a family should live there, I know you can't control that, but like, I'd just hate for someone to be like, Airbnb, let's go, or something, so, like, if they write you a nice letter or something, can you?
So, what I can tell you is that there are certain, there are certain items within the Jonathan Articles of Incorporation that prevent us from selling it to a company or a municipality, which is why we are, we, we are following the path that we are, because we are a homeowners' association for members, and we want to sell it to a, a family that can be a member.
The one time I like an association, there you go.
So I'll, I'll give you that.
Is that part of Jonathan Association?
It is, so that's the other piece, is any changes, not only do they have to go through the Preservation Commission, but they have to be approved by the Jonathan Association Architectural Review Committee as well.
Okay.
Do you have interested parties already, or no? Are you just so early that?
We are so early, we haven't, we haven't brought it, I'm sure that as.
The one point totally.
Developers are watching these Planning Commission meetings, and there's a potential of a point nine acre lot in Chaska available, there might be some interest.
There you go. Way to sell it.
You know, this is pretty similar to how we ended up handling the old City Hall building too, and that was.
I love what they did with it.
Well, and, I mean, you look at like, they did a nice garage, the house looks nice, they renovated it, and sort of the same thing as Jonathan Association, the city wasn't really the best owner of that property, you know, because we weren't really set up to be able to use it, to be able to take care of it. So I, to me, this is a great, great way to help preserve a historic house in town.
All right, any other comments from council, if not, what are your thoughts?
Move to adopt resolution 22-63, approving the preliminary plat for Idle House Jonathan Association.
Motion by Councilmember Wong.
Second, but I'd also like to say my mom just said yes, I did go to preschool there.
Seconded by, yes, her mom went to preschool, she went to preschool there. Councilmember Hatfield seconding, again, this is adopt, uh, resolution 2022-63 for the Idle House. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We're done, thanks, gentlemen.
Why did we do that, these guys first?
As a supportive.
All right, we're just, 9C adopt resolution 2022-62 in ordinance 1017, approving the preliminary site and building plan and zoning ordinance amendment, DOA for the Chaska Tech Center.
Mayor, Councilmember, this is, what's in front of you is for the old Chaska Building Center site, this is the last piece of that property that's between what is now Formacoat and the Cuzzi's Restaurant. So we do, you guys have seen this before, the, the concept showed more smaller sort of condo spaces for smaller businesses, and this is coming from the Planning Commission with a recommendation with, for approval, so I'll turn this over to Liz.
Thank you, Matt, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We have a preliminary site and building plan and zoning ordinance amendment request this evening for the Chaska Tech Center, also known as the Chaska Building Center Phase Three, being proposed by Amcon Construction. So as Matt mentioned, the site in question this evening is highlighted in blue on this aerial exhibit, it's in between Cuzzi's Restaurant and the existing Formacoat business. Fire Lane is also on that easterly side and would provide the main access into the site. County Road 61 or Chaska Boulevard is on what we will consider the south side here, and then another site owned by DDK on the westerly side, a part of the Chaska Building Center site. So we're at the second stage in the process, we still have another process to go, we're kind of in the details now. So this area dates back to 2010, when the concept plan and preliminary plat were approved for the Building Center site, so that would be the westerly most lot or the DDK building that I highlighted earlier. Then that same site got approvals for preliminary and final site and building plans in 2011. Then it was about seven years later that we came back for the Formacoat site, which is the middle site of the Chaska Building Center area. That was in June and July of 2018, that the site plans, the rezoning for PMD 21 and the plat were approved for the Formacoat site, but also the site that's in question this evening. And then February of this year is when we saw the concept plan come through for this project, so now we're at the second stage. So now, we're at the second stage. So what they're asking for is preliminary site and building plan approvals specifically for a multi-tenant office warehouse quasi-retail building totaling forty-one thousand square feet in size and one story tall. The tenant spaces will roughly be between thirteen hundred to twenty-four hundred square feet of tenant space. So they envision about twenty-five or so tenants making up this building. Again, these will be used and programmed for small emerging businesses. So, businesses that are outgrowing, kind of where they really started their business, either their homes or other smaller storage spaces. This would allow them to kind of grow into that next phase of their business. So they have these spaces really set up for contractors, showrooms, installation companies, small manufacturers, people who sell goods online, dance instructors and the like. It does not allow for tenants that require any type of outdoor storage or overnight parking needs. So as it relates to kind of that specific language, we are, or the applicant is requesting for a zoning ordinance amendment to PMD twenty-one to include more specific language for their site pertaining to that type of use. So the site in question is roughly three-point-seven acres total. There is a truck lane access that's been anticipated on the northern side of the site, which would connect with the other two lots of the Building Center site. So the Formacoat and the DDK building that I mentioned before would all have shared access on this truck lane along the northern side. And you'll see it in a site plan later on. But effectively, all three sites would be able to access that for, truck access onto Fire Lane, which just provides another more convenient route for trucks to enter into and out of the site. And again, that's highlighted here on their site plan, which would provide a continuous connection out to Fire Lane here. So the building that they're proposing is U-shaped in format. So they'll have parking kind of flanked around all sides of the building. The interior portion of the U-shaped would allow for additional parking, but where a majority of the overhead doors would be situated or what they would consider their loading area of the facility. So, in essence, with the shape of the building, the viewpoints into this area is obscure at best. There are a couple overhead doors on the east and west sides of the facade. Just due to the shape of the building, the tenants on the corners here just don't have access in the back here. So there are those few exceptions to provide overhead doors on the corners there. The access, again, will come from two points off of Fire Lane. One access will be in line with the Cuzzi's access, just to the east there. And then, the other access would provide truck access to provide that continuous connection into the existing truck lane. In terms of parking, they're providing enough parking onsite for this type of use and size of use, so there's no issues there. This is their landscape plan, so landscaping will effectively be around all sides of the site here and in the back to provide additional buffer. These are a couple renderings of the building. The palette of the building has more of a cream tone to really fit in with kind of the palette that you see in downtown Chaska. It will also fit in well with the other two sites within the Chaska Building Center area of Formacoat and the DDK building. So again, they, they picked those colors strategically to fit in with the existing context. This is the elevation drawings of the building. A couple changes that they've done since concept is provide more articulation on the corners with their masonry, so that the bumpouts of the building are more articulated to really stand out. Another change that they've done is with the pedestrian doors and the overhead doors. They have changed them to be powder-coated finishes to match the exterior of the building. Before, they were gray hollow-metal doors. So they didn't appear to fit in with the overall architecture of the building. But now, these will be of colors that will fit in quite nicely. In addition to that, they'll also incorporate windows within the overhead doors and the pedestrian doors, so that these openings feel inviting. One of the things that they're showing with this elevation drawing is this option for kind of a flex space. There is an option for these corner areas to convert to full storefronts and provide more of that glass exterior with the pedestrian doors. So if people had more of a retail function associated with their business, they could certainly do that with the building if desired.
Where's the signage on that, like, that, that particular unit?
On this one?
The corner one, yeah.
I believe this area in particular is associated with it and-
Cause that, you know-
Is that correct?
It's kind of a-
Yeah.
Ideal corner.
Right, so the door here would be associated with that storefront. And then, all of the signage would be in designated areas over the doors. So, these little rectangular areas that you see above are the signage allotments.
So, on the topic of signage, is it gonna be uniform signage? You know, you look at some and it's all like, doesn't matter if you're a restaurant and you have a logo type, it's the same style formatting?
The owner's nodding yes.
Nodding yes, so they'll all be standard formatting?
Standard signage written into the lease. They allow a tenant to have their logo on the sign, but standard colors.
Standard colors, logo could be unsigned, got it, okay.
Are you allowing like, restaurant tenants? Because I know that some, some, you know, they've seen them around in industrial parks where someone says, you know, it's cheaper rent and I can cater to that business.
I don't see it being a restaurant site.
I would need to have-
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you're gonna have to come up the, what he said, I can save you the trip. What he said is, is he didn't see it being a restaurant.
Yeah, I mean, I totally believe that it's not a site. People normally, but I mean, I've seen them where like, a restaurant says, "I'm just gonna open like, a sandwich shop and, you know, because I can serve all the industrial customers there."
Sure, yeah, from a zoning standpoint, the zoning wouldn't allow for that. Oops, and just a four-
One other question, it's like, so are the, are the walls load-bearing walls? So if you have a tenant who says, you know, "I'm growing out of like, my space. If I wanna take two, would you, you, could you, would you do a cut-through or just take out the wall?"
The, we're trying to make the-
You state your name for our records, please.
Good evening, sorry about that. My name is Bruce Hillier, I'm the architect on project for Amcon. And the idea is to make the roof a single span. That way, you allow flexibility within the project because you may have a tenant that rents a smaller tenant, or space, then all of a sudden, his business grows, so he wants to go into the next space, you can take that wall down without any problems.
Okay, great, perfect, thanks.
You got anything left, Liz?
Yeah, just, the only item for discussion, and I'm sure they'll wanna respond to this as well, is the building materials proposed on the building. They don't meet our industrial standards for building design and materials ordinance, specifically with the masonry. They have to meet thirty percent Class One materials, and they're short of that just with the masonry that's proposed. So we are, we do have a comment or a condition where we need to work on getting that to be a Class One material. So if, that really involves it either being modular face brick, a natural stone, or something similar of that nature in order to be classified that way. So that's something that they'll need to work on for final. So we're asking two motions tonight. One is to adopt Resolution number twenty-two-dash-sixty-two, which would be approving the preliminary site and building plan for Chaska Tech Center. And then, based on the conditions listed within that. And then, a motion to adopt ordinance number one-thousand-seventeen, approving the zoning ordinance amendment to PMD twenty-one. Happy to answer any questions, otherwise.
Any questions for Liz? I see the architect wants to jump in.
Can you continue a little bit more?
The, one of the things that I just wanna say up the bat is that it's been great to work with the city, especially with Elizabeth, she's been very flexible with us, even when we've had to tweak things a little bit during, during this process. So thank you very much for doing that. We would like to ask one more, and that is the use of a Class Two material, technically from the ordinance, to be classified as a Class One material. Now, the City Council in the ordinance says that they do have the power to do that. The material that I would like to use on the base of it is a cultured stone. And this is a photograph that I took from a project in Edina called Pentagon Park. There's two retail buildings there where the old Pentagon Park was. And this is an actual photograph of the material itself. Now, it's, it's basically cultured stone, and it's a man-made material, but it's made out of crushed stone, limestone, and a cementous bonding. It's tested up to sixty-five-hundred pounds per square inch, and its lifetime is up to a hundred and forty years. It's as good or better as any stone. It's not as porous as limestone. And the owner and I think it's a great material, it looks great. We've used it on other buildings. And I'm sure I don't have to mention the fact that cost of construction and materials has skyrocketed just recently. And this project has got a budget to contain in order for it to work and get these new people in this space. So we're trying to be as economic as we possibly can with our materials.
So where would you use that cultured stone?
On the base.
On the base, up to like, three foot, two foot?
Yeah, well, three feet, three feet.
Okay, and so you, would you use the same application of this where you'd have a masonry that's a, a smooth masonry interspersed with the, with the textured masonry?
Yeah, just like this.
Just like that, okay. And I was, so just for the record, I was actually on the, on the committee that actually came up with the building materials that you're referencing. So, I'm very familiar with them. So, I think this, I mean, this is in line with that, the spirit of what we were doing. We wanted to make sure it was quality and something that had a, that had a, had a reasonably, I guess, high-quality appeal from the, from the viewer's perspective. Now, if, if we're doing something different than what this is, then I think we need to talk about it more. But if it's this, I mean, I'm familiar with that material.
Yeah, this is the very thing that we used at Pentagon Park. There's two retail buildings there, there's gonna be a number of other buildings that are going in that area. But the two retail buildings are up right now, and this is exactly, I took the photograph two weeks ago. And they're both built, so this is what, what we have there now.
Liz, if you had a chance to take a look at this as-
Not that one, we've only had the material samples, so-
For the benefit of my colleagues here, it would be nice to actually see a sample of actual material. I mean, I, I understand, it's, you know, this is a photograph of it.
Well, we have, I did deliver a sample of the material to Elizabeth a couple weeks ago. And she was good enough to bring it to you, she's great. This is, we updated the EPIS color a little bit on this project too, because Elizabeth suggested that we have a little bit more contrast between this color on the base and the color on the, on the field of the building, which makes sense. This is a little bit lighter than the one we had before. So that color addition up here on the west elevation is pretty close. It's kind of hard to see because after you put it through a camera, the color's kind of getting muted. But, this would be the base material for, for the base of the building. This would be the EPIS material, that would be above.
The only reason I ask the question is, I think we need to be really careful about these materials because we make everybody follow the state's standards. And it's entirely possible that Liz might go out to this place and we might come up with another, this, we might look at this and say, "Hey, we should classify this as a Class One, because it might be a new product that we have to add." But I would give us that direction instead of making any decision on that now, because it's, it's gonna get really tough when we get into these new parks to be able to go back to somebody and say, "Well, we allowed somebody to, to do something off the Class One, and we're requiring you to do this."
Yeah, and I think that the danger that we, when we discussed this was that, you know, we have a lot of builders who say, "I'm just gonna put everything EPIS." And then, "Oh, great, so it's all EPIS and it's this big, all ugly slap-side thing with no variation, and it just looks like crap," right? I mean, it just looks like it was cheaply, I mean, it was cheap because it's basically a square concrete box with nothing else, except a couple of windows cut into it. So, you know, if, so if like, for example, you look at the EPIS side of it, and that's all it was, it'd be a hard no, right? But this is architectural, you're trying to do something different. And I think that's where it starts getting sticky, because it gets to where, you know, Matt's coming from, which is that we're trying to encourage architectural interest within the, within the structure. And I think you're, you're trying to address that from that perspective, using a different class of material. So I think there, there needs to be a way to make sure that we're kind of articulating what the spirit of what we're trying to achieve is.
Well, to me, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna say that this is a substitute, then this material should be on our Class One list.
Right, and that's the question, so the-
Yeah, what's the difference between Class One and-
Cause I was gonna say, why isn't it a Class One?
Yeah, because it's maybe a new product that we haven't seen before, you know, those types of things. But until we actually see it, it's really hard, because, you know, sometimes in a picture, it doesn't portray, the, so the Class One materials are like, you know, brick would be a Class One material. Glass would be a Class One material. They're really high-quality type of materials.
Basically, the page is right here, it says that Class One is brick, modular, natural stone, glass, copper, and other comparable or superior materials as determined by the City Council.
Right, and I think that the, the challenge is that EPIS, or not EPIS, or cultured stone, cultured stone has different, there's different grades of cultured stone. There's different, you know, different makes of cultured stones. Some look better than others, and if you choose a good one, it can look really high-quality. You choose a really bad one, it can look horrible, right? And I mean, it's like a lot of things. And I think that some of the material choices that, you know, were chosen in Class One, it's kind of hard to screw up glass because glass is glass.
So is that, is that what I'll call a block, one of those? Okay, and it, it is that, what I'll call pox on them, like that, it's not smooth? Does that almost look smooth?
This one is smooth, and this is the one we're gonna use. This was the only one that the manufacturer had that was in that color.
I was gonna say, I didn't care for that.
It's almost impossible, I'm not sure why, but the smooth, this is all smooth, almost like a hone limestone look to it, which is really what it is. And then, this other stuff is chiseled limestone.
And that's that sample below?
No, this is the EPIS that we'd be using as the material above the stone. To be above the stone to the underside of the overhead doors, which is that ten feet, and then from ten feet, twelve feet would be a black band of-
You know, for, I was gonna offer up for Formacoat on that project, we did work with that developer at the time and allowed them to use a new material that wasn't explicitly listed. And that's the material that looks like brick on that exterior. It's not in fact a full brick that's on the exterior of that building. But we did that working with them, and after, you know, understanding the samples and understanding what the end product was going to be. Because of their, the very reason that Matt's laying out is that, you know, once we do that, then, you know, anyone else who wants to use that material, we've gotta be comfortable saying that, "Yeah, you know, this is something that's okay." I do think that knowing we have a significant amount of industrial, you know, that will be coming through the pipeline with any, you know, stroke of luck here over the next few years. We do need to be thinking about that precedent that we're setting. So, I would recommend, you know, Liz and I take a field trip. You know, we can go see how this was put into, into practice at the site that you guys have used it, learn more about how that's played out for you. And we can make that evaluation of the field.
And that doesn't need council action for you to add that to the list?
Well, I know it does. What we would do is, we'd, if we think that this meets a Class One material, we'd come back to you and say, "We think the, we think the list needs to be amended to include this." Because in essence, we need to be able to say, like, like Nate said, "If we're gonna allow it here, we have to allow it everywhere." Because in essence, we need to be able to say, like Nate said, if we're going to allow it here, we have to allow it everywhere else.
I think the trick, though, is that, you know, with this particular type of material, there's, there's a wide variation. I mean, a variation in terms of the way this material can be, can be created, right? You can create it to look like it's chiseled marble or chiseled granite, and then you can create it to look just like a big old slab, right? And that's, I think, that's the rub that's going to be difficult to really, to do that. But I think that's something that if you guys can kind of help us provide some guidance on ways we could do that, I think that would be helpful because I think we need to, this is maybe one of those things where, like, in, like, this particular application, I could see, yeah, this kind of makes sense, but there may be other applications where no one does it. It's exactly the same material, just like a different make of that material, right? And I think that's where we need to figure out, how do we manage that because of exactly what you just said?
No, I agree with everything you're saying, and I think, I think there's ways, you know, if we go out to the field and we go, yeah, you know, we're all shaking our heads that this could make some sense. I think there's some ways of thinking about that, find more approval to make sure that it's going to work.
Because the whole point of why we came up with those architectural materials is to make it really, really clear for people who are building new buildings to say, yep, if I'm going to do this, I just, you know, I got to have like X-number percentage in my, my front of my building, it's going to be these materials, I'll pick from these, yep, I'm good to go. And then, there's no, like, you know, having to negotiate with council and planning commission, everybody else. I'd love to be able to figure out a way that something like good choices could be, you know, made easy for people doing new developments so it's not a hurdle, we don't have to have this negotiation.
So, we would just go ahead and do this, we're in, we're in...
Preliminary.
We're in preliminary.
Yeah, you would just give us direction to take a look at this.
And then, it would be figured out by final.
And then, I think the only other thing I would suggest is that, you know, and I think, I guess, or rather, you guys are, it sounds like the plan is to make a recommendation of what we do to the list that's there to, if we should amend it or not, and whether it should be amended with it or if you choose to.
Exactly, yeah, because we want to, we want to deal with this.
How many exceptions for them, and make them change the list, if that's where it comes in?
It's just like anything else. We don't want, we don't want this to be a variance process. If it's good enough for one person, it should be good enough for everybody.
Absolutely. If it's a good choice, right?
Well, thank you for, I, I think what the plan is, I'm pretty much hearing here is that Nate and Liz will come out and visit that project or with you guys, and then we'll kind of go from there. I mean, it seems like a project, it seems like a material that makes sense that we look at and we visit.
So, we don't need to have it done and approved right now, we can...
We can do it as part of the final.
Yep, it would be just part of the final, whatever that decision would be. Yeah, no, we don't want to slow it down.
I'm Ed Flaherty, I'm the owner of the project. Just one quick question, if you've done this on the building next door and made those exceptions...
We haven't done this. We did A, we did, we worked on a...
There's manufactured stone just like this on the front of that building, and there's thin brick, which doesn't meet your class-one material on that building.
Yeah, but what we did is we went specifically with that product, and we said, yep, we think this can work, and now we allow it for other places to be able to do that specific product.
You don't allow thin brick? You still consider that as a class-two, right?
We don't, we didn't consider it thin brick. That was a concrete panel with brick embossed into it. So, it does look and feel like full modular brick. So, that was the determination that we made.
I looked at that product on Sunday, I have pictures of it. It's thin brick. I'm sorry.
I don't think we're saying that this doesn't work. We just need to be able to go out and see it in the field and be able to...
Sure, okay. We can do that.
Yeah, it's Pentagon Park, it's on the northeast corner of Highway one hundred and four ninety-four, where that old terrible office building was that was torn down about ten years ago.
All right, does anyone else have any other questions or comments for either Liz, Nate, or the owners or architect? I, I think that this is a, a very neat product. I think it's something that, like we talked about earlier, you heard us, that we need apartments. This is something that we need for the small business. I think, I think this is idea, and I can't wait, and I hope we can get this material figured out quickly and we move forward because I think that this is something, I welcome this project here, and I really welcome that site being developed more than anything. So, I'm excited, I can't wait, and I hope they get out on that field trip quick and everything keeps moving forward. Nothing slowed down, and, and you'll get a final whenever, but I just have a feeling it will be good. Is your idea to start moving as soon as you get your approvals? We have to come up, it's got to come up here, though, they can't hear it at home.
We've been operating on a letter of intent subject to these approvals. This is a big deal to us because if we can't get this, it's a dead project. We, we've seen a twenty-eight percent increase in construction materials since September. And if we have to go to brick, it kills it. So, given your representations today, we'll proceed to purchase agreement and developers' agreement. And that'll be the next two steps here.
We're quite, we're pretty well into that already, so...
Well, I figured there's a lot more vote on than we know about, which is a good thing, it should be, you know.
Thank you.
So, all right, all right, anything else? If not...
And this is two separate, this is a resolution and an ordinance, okay.
No, I, we would just do the, hang on there, we would do twenty, twenty-two dash sixty-two would be our first motion, if someone's willing to make it.
Yeah, I would, I want to make a quick comment before that. One of the things that really is exciting about this project is that, for me, is that something like eighty to ninety percent of businesses that start off as small businesses in a community, when they grow and outgrow their spaces, tend to stay in the same community or stay within like, you know, three to five miles of that community because all their workforce and other people, you know, all, you know, know that they're there and they want to stay there. So, if we've got like, you know, like, you know, twenty-something units here of small businesses and, you know, even like, you know, ten, twenty percent of those grow out of those spaces and into other spaces in Chaska area, that is a huge, huge thing for a community. So, really excited about this, you know, and the, and the, and the really encouraging small business. So, thank you guys for, again, for all this, so, so really important to us here. So, I'll second Councilmember Hatfield's motion.
So, motion by Councilmember Hatfield, second by Councilmember Wong. Again, this is a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-two-sixty-two, approve preliminary site and building site for Phase Three of the Chaska Building Site, and that's Chaska Tech Center. Discussion. And that's, do we have to add on there based on approval of that new material or whatever you...
It's just a direction.
Okay, good. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name sign. Motion carries. All right, now, motion to adopt ordinance one thousand seventeen, approving zoning ordinance amendment to PMD twenty-one.
So moved.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Hatfield.
No, Hubbard, Hubbard heard.
Hubbard, Hubbard, the other H, sorry.
Did you wait for the second motion?
Discussion. You're not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post name sign. Motion carries. All right. Must be the one you guys are waiting for.
It's two and a half hours.
Could wait like, you know, thirty seconds.
All right, adopt resolution twenty-two-two-sixty-four, approving concept plan for Cuskey Estates.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is an item that's basically an extension of the Harvest Neighborhood going down through the Cuskey property, which exits onto Old Creek Road. This is the concept plan for this development and is coming to you from the Planning Commission with the recommendation for approval. I'll turn this over to Liz to give the presentation.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. We have a concept plan in front of us for the Cuskey Estates property, which is also a natural extension of the Harvest Neighborhood. This is being proposed by Tradition Development. The site in question is highlighted in yellow above, however, only a portion of that, roughly ten acres adjacent to the Harvest Development, is really being looked at as a part of this request. Creek Road basically abuts the site on the easterly side. We have Highway forty-four, or I'm sorry, Highway, County Road, Highway forty-four, or Big Woods Boulevard on the southern side. Red Cedar Creek subdivision is on the south side, and then the Harvest Development is on the westerly side of the site. So, we're at the first step in the process. We'll still have two other steps to go to get this moving forward. In terms of approvals that have been done in and near the site, in September of two thousand fourteen was when Club West Second Edition was approved for their final plat. This is where they showed the extension and stub of Vista View Drive on its easterly side. Club West Third also directly abuts the site area, and that final plat was approved in March of two thousand fifteen. The developer also conducted their own neighborhood meeting on March twenty-third of this year. So, again, that was to allow for them to introduce their concept plan to the affected property owners. They did get a good turnout for that meeting, a summary was provided. But the topics of concern and questions that were raised during that time surrounded the use of Creek Road, the overall traffic from both the vehicles and the construction, park space proposed, tree preservation, drainage, and views into the site. So, what the developer is requesting is a concept plan for a nineteen-lot detached, single-family plan. The comprehensive plan guides this area for low-density residential and open space. The zoning is currently in an open zoning district, so they will need to rezone as they move on to the next step. So, the site, the total acreage of the site that's highlighted in yellow here is approximately thirty-five acres in size. The west portion is basically vacant or unused, so it's not even used for agricultural purposes, it's just open land. The east side is kind of where the existing site is used today. The current property owner has previously used the eastern area for aggregate mining. They are not mining at the moment, however, they are in the process of reclamation, so they are bringing Phil back into the site today. So, they, this area in question will be retained by the property owner, so the Cuskey family. And again, to kind of finalize out the reclamation portion of the east side. There's wooded areas on both the north and the south sides, so they'll have to provide further detail on that and analysis as they approach preliminary. So, again, the nineteen-lot configuration, a part of the concept plan is highlighted in this area on the western side of the property. It encompasses approximately ten acres of area where the nineteen lots would lay out within that. There's four lots that would come off of an extension of Vista View Drive and be on the northern side of that. Then, they propose an additional street and cul-de-sac to access the other fifteen lots.
Liz, I'm going to stop you. That plan is different than the plans in ours. What's the deal?
This one?
That shows four lots on top, the one we have shows three in Park.
Sure.
Oh, that thing, yeah, that's the one I'm looking at.
Okay.
Yeah, I have the same question.
What's the difference?
Yeah, I think they did one update after submitting, so that's probably why you see two different plans here. But the one shown here is what they're proposing as a part of their concept plan. So, the four on, on top and the fifteen below. And really, what they had to change here was allow for some conceptual stormwater areas, which the other plan didn't show.
So, is that what, where, oh, that is the stormwater, okay.
Yep, so they have some stormwater area defined here and kind of in that open area as well. So, that's important to kind of call out initially, just to start thinking about that. Obviously, they'll get into the details of that in the preliminary, but it's important to show it conceptually.
Was the stormwater in the right place with the addition down the road?
Yes. Generally speaking, yes. You know, I can't speak to the technical terminology of that, I'm sure their engineer can. But really, these are going to be the areas that will be suitable for stormwater.
So, there, there's not going to be a park there?
No, I think...
No.
Oh, it just wasn't maybe labeled again?
Yeah, that's what I was...
Yeah, they showed it as park space, and just from our interpretation of that and what our comp plan shows, we don't have additional, any additional public park space in this area. It's basically been programmed out in the other park spaces of the adjoining Harvest Developments. Really, the only areas for open space or usability there are areas for access into the ravine system that we have comments on, but at this time, we're not in a position to lay out any future public park area as a part of this development.
Maybe a little something on that. But one of the reasons the concept plans for like this whole area become so important is, you know, we don't necessarily want to accept donations of land in every subdivision that happens because then we're going to get a bunch of undersized parks scattered all over the place. And when we looked at our whole financial plan for Southwest Chaska, we looked at our policy to say, okay, neighborhood parks have to be within a certain distance of all the houses. And if we're going to have a community park, it needs to be this size. And so, when we came up with the concept plan, you know, we sort of balanced, what are we going to get as cash contributions for parkland education? So, if they, if we don't accept land here as a park, then we get a cash contribution. If that's where we want the park to be, then we take the land contribution. But altogether, it helps us make a better system than to have parks, small parks that are undersized, spread all over, and it keeps it consistent, make sure that we have a consistency across the city as far as how far people can expect neighborhood parks to be from each house.
I have a question, though, as we're on this topic, not to deviate too far, but the park that's over in the Vista View kind of drive neighborhood, that is an HOA park, though, right?
There are HOA parks.
So, is this going to be in addition to the HOA?
It could be.
Because, I mean, I think that's important, if we're going to put nineteen homes and they don't, I mean, I know that signage says that park is for their residents of that HOA, and I think that's really important that...
Yep, but I think, I think there's a differentiation between the HOA stuff and the community stuff. The community stuff is stuff that we're responsible for. So, we want to make sure in our overall community that we're not putting too few or too many, too many parks that all of a sudden one area has more space than another.
Right, and I...
So, this absolutely could be a HOA park.
Right, I guess like geographically, looking at this area, and like, the community park is going to be...
Yeah, keep in mind though...
Way over on the other side.
Keep in mind, though, there's Savannah Park that's, so we look at, we look at the radius. So, the, in our comp plan, it says, we don't want anything in, Nate, is it a half-mile?
I believe it's a half-mile out of town.
Yeah, I think it's a half-mile radius that we want to make sure that there's some type of a neighborhood park that's, that's in. So, each area, we make sure is within a half-mile of a city park.
So, where, where's Savannah's park then in relational aspect of it?
So, Savannah Park is up in there.
Yeah, there, I mean, that's a...
But we also have Veterans Park that's right at the bottom of the hill from this, too.
So, keep in mind that, that neighborhood street that's served, that they're extending and then, and then cul-de-sacking with this will eventually connect to Creek Road.
Is there ever going to be sidewalks on Creek Road?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. There is right now. There's a, there's a trail that goes up...
That whole stretch?
All the way up to where we finished it. It's past that entrance.
Okay.
Right past the entrance.
Yep.
Okay.
But we don't know when that next phase is, that could be five... But we don't know when that next phase is. That could be five to seven years.
Yeah. The only reason I mention is, it, sometimes it's a good reminder as we're going through these that, you know, the reason sometimes we would accept land and, or money instead of land is to make sure we have a system.
Right. And I, I get what you're saying. I, just that, you know, we've had those discussions about that in the past, and, and, you know, what happens in the short term. They're gonna go to the closest park.
They are, yeah.
And if that's the HOAs, then we might have to talk about whether or not they'd want to that HOA, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
I hate to ask a really dumb question. Were those houses on the backside notified of this?
Yes, they were. It looked like there were about 20 people at a neighborhood meeting in the notes.
Okay. I'm just surprised nobody's here. I guess that's.
Scared away the first two and a half hours.
Well, I, I know, but I mean, I just.
Maybe someone's on Zoom, you don't know.
Anybody on Zoom, Kevin?
I mean, I don't.
Some people on Zoom, but I don't think, nobody has expressed any interest in speaking.
Okay, no, that's fine. That.
If you think about this, we've had multiple additions of this harvest up there, and I think when you're in sort of a developing neighborhood, you sort of expect it.
No, I, I'm not saying anyone's against it. I'm just saying, it's just surprising in today's world that we, somebody wasn't in person. But if they're on Zoom, that's great. Glad they're listening.
I think the only interesting observation there is that Vista View Drive appears to be a cul-de-sac versus a stub, which probably should have been stubbed, because I think there's probably.
That is a stub. It's not a cul-de-sac.
It is a.
I, it shows that it's a cul-de-sac, but I am 90% certain that's stubbed.
Okay, I was scared.
You're talking about.
You know.
We're at dead ends here.
First thing.
Yeah.
We're dead end.
Oh, on the existing.
On the existing.
Oh, I, okay.
Should go, I can look at Google Maps. That's great, because that, that's the only thing that makes, you know, people wonder like, oh.
You guys think it's a stub? It's not a cul-de-sac there.
It's a temporary, all the stuff put on the end.
Right.
Off the property.
That's, that's just to facilitate turnaround of snowplows.
Oh, yeah, it doesn't look very formal. It's not curved or anything.
I just do not even remember that.
It's not curved or anything.
It's just an observation.
It does look like somebody just accidentally dumped some cement there.
If you need to. Dave Nash with the Lion Engineering. Actually, it was before my time, but a lion did the planning on that, too. Yeah, that's it, is what we've done in other sites in this area, temporary cul-de-sac, turnaround. But the intent was, Vista View was always gonna go through to Creek Road.
Yeah, I guess.
It's got the barricade there.
Yeah, and I guess my thing.
I just thought it was straight, because you only gotta back up two houses and turn around, so.
And then, I assume, Liz, that the dashed marks is to use a line that I've heard before that I thought was fun, are ghost lots in theory, right, to show that it's not a concept, because this is a concept plan. It's more just like, at a time in the future, potentially, those could look that way and develop that way.
Correct. Yep. They'll have to come in for the same process and really evaluate these areas.
And then, just because I'm curious, and I'm talking now, you're bringing in haul into that space. Is there any intent to use some of the leveling from and, and moving of earth from the development to kind of push it up into that space? Is, because that sometimes helps people not worry less about traffic of hauling, because you're gonna move dirt on the property or to zone it, to move it. Is that, is there any intent to take some of that dirt and put it into the gravel pit space of the reclamation or not? Just curious.
Good evening, councilors, and Mr. Mayor Pat Rossi with Tradition Development. We've done, Dave's firm, Alliance Engineering, has done some preliminary grading plans for the site now, and we're showing the site is essentially balanced, so we wouldn't intend to move any dirt down there at this point.
Well, that's good for the neighbors.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Liz, we keep cutting India. I don't know where you're at.
It's fine. Can just move things along here. I think there were just a couple of things that they need to work on for preliminary, working on the tree preservation aspect of the site, so evaluating where the wooded steep slopes are and everything that falls outside of that. And with those ravine systems, kind of on the north and south sides, if there's potential to provide access into those areas, as we've done in other areas of the Harvest Development and other developments that abut ravine system, is there little punch-throughs that residents can access the ravine system in an adequate way? Ponding will need to get further evaluated. They also need to evaluate how the residential portion will kind of coexist with the mining operation with them bringing in fill.
How would you screen that when they're that high?
Well, I think that's a part of the evaluation process, is to really understand kind of that separation, which we just haven't gotten into the details of that right now, and how often it occurs. They've stated that it's very infrequent that they do come in and bring in fill, but I think just understanding all of that.
Cuskey's building is always gonna be in sight. You know, you can't hide that.
Yeah.
When you're that high above, well, hey, you just.
Yeah. So there's, there's questions around that, that we want to have better answers for moving forward, so.
Okay.
And then, just working on a construction traffic plan, which is very typical for any extended neighborhoods. So with that, we're asking you to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022-64, which is approving the concept plan for Cuskey Estates property, and then based on the conditions that are listed within that.
Questions for Liz? Questions for anyone?
I know. Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that I like the lot size. I just think it's gonna be a nice addition. It matches. I think it was done well. I like the lot sizes. I like the looks of the homes. I think it, I just think it'll fit well. Sometimes people come in and wanna like, doesn't always match just right. I think this really nicely matches. It's kind of an easy thing here, so. Those are my thoughts.
I like the fact that they put it in there, and, and I, and I know that drops off pretty quick, but you really look at it, there's limited amount of trees that they're taking out, which is what we always seem to hear a lot about, that they're, they're working, to me, they're working with the space they have on earth.
Yeah.
Set it up pretty nice.
Cuskey, they're planning their operations. Is there, was that like a, just a forever thing until, or is there like an end date?
Five years.
Yeah, they've said approximately five years.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
Yeah.
They said approximately.
Okay.
So if, again, this is just, this, when we infill a neighborhood is the biggest concern about, like, can the, can the bigger equipment be brought in through the bottom? The dozers and whatever you gotta do, the big dumps, hose and all that, can it, versus coming through the neighborhoods? Just a question.
We can look into that. We had been, to this point, planning to access through Vista View.
And the good thing is, this is a pretty, there's a pretty straight shot off of 44, or off of, what is it, Founers, whatever that.
It's a pretty short shot, and.
I looked at that, too.
It's relatively small amount of earthwork. Dave, I'm gonna look back to you, in the neighborhood of 20,000, 20,000 yards. Probably a couple of weeks of grading, I think, for something of that size, so. I, I don't, I don't know exactly which equipment we would use, you know, on our bigger jobs, that you've seen with Ennebeck on Harvest West, and bringing the off-road trucks and backhoes.
Right.
This may just be backhoeing, dozers pushing things around. It's, it's not so far, you know, we, we wouldn't have the long hauls here, so.
Right. Okay. Is it your intention to try to move dirt this year?
It is our intent to, to move dirt this year.
Okay.
And we'll see how far we can get this year. You know, the site has some advantages at the trunk sanitary sewer from all the Harvest Development runs right through, so very small amount of utility work as well. Sewer down the cul-de-sac, services, water main extension, and then the storm sewer, so pretty, pretty smallish job here.
So that's gonna be Robert Thomas building?
This will be Robert Thomas. You know, um.
They've done all of that.
We've done 90% of the work, I think, to the west there, so Robert Thomas Homes will be coming in. These are 75-foot lots with the same homes that are in the existing development in the third, in the Club West Third Edition. As we get to prelim plat, we're, we're likely to become, I believe, Club West Eleventh Edition with this plat, so.
The way that Robert Thomas is selling them now, I don't see him having any problem selling these either, so.
Right. We're needing lots in, on the east side of Savannah, that's for sure.
Not much left. Okay. All right, any, any other comments, again, for anyone watching? This is the first time we see a concept plan. It's gotta go through preliminary and final yet. So this is where our staff now will work with these developers, finalize this plan a lot more. This is, a lot of times, just boxes, layouts, could change, a lot or two here or there, depending on where storm ponding goes and things like that. But then I'll come back at a preliminary, whenever that, whenever that is usually, what, a couple months or a month, depending how fast-tracked we are. And then, we'll be in the same spot, and then the last step is final, and that's generally very minor things that have to be done. So, yeah, that's where we're at. All right. Any other comments, questions? If not, I would look for your thoughts, whether it's a motion, motion one way or another, I guess.
To adopt Resolution 2022-64, approving the concept plan for Cuskey Estates.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Councilmember Wong, second by Councilmember Gra. Again, Resolution 2022-64, approving concept for Cuskey Estates.
Can I just make one really quick comment?
Yep, absolutely.
Um, I know it's high level, but one of the commentary on the neighborhood meeting was the questions of the next steps of the project. It was explained with this review and the approval of preliminary file. Provide opportunities to make residents, you know, make comments. I just want to make sure, just as you saw earlier in our very long discussions with some of our other agenda items, that you guys are making sure that you're communicating with those existing neighbors as you move forward through this process, so, and working with them.
If I might add.
Yep.
Yes, we, we are continuing to work with them. The mayor mentioned the lots that will back to the, the new development here. I know that, from looking at the sign-up sheet here before the meeting, at least three of those residents were there and spoke personally with us. We're gonna get back out there in the next week or two with those residents and try to address some concerns they have about existing drainage there and taking care of that with the development.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion, a second on the floor, last call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Thanks for hanging with us, Mike, guys.
Thanks.
All right, we are done with action items. We move on to item 10, bills. Questions on a bill?
Not today.
None? Anyone? Motion to pay the bills.
But can we memorialize this night somehow?
I do think this is the first.
Just like maybe a plaque.
Wait, let me, let me quick look at one and get a question.
Oh, geez.
For the record, I do appreciate your diligence of bringing it up, but I do, so we're all poking.
And I actually did look through. I didn't actually have any, I did not have any.
I'll save it for down, as the Mike Wong didn't have a question on Bill's day.
All right.
She called it.
How about a motion to pay the bills? Mike, Mike is making a motion to pay the bills. Second on that.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. Discussion, hearing done. Please, please.
Councilmember Hatfield.
Yes.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Yes.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
Councilmember Gra.
Yes.
Mayor Winchell.
Yes. Other business. How about Councilmember Hatfield?
Yeah, lots of events coming up this week. So Taste of Chaska is rescheduled for this Wednesday, 5 to 9. I'm very sad I'm missing it, but we do get to do some interviews for the Southwest Transit CEO, so.
Oh.
Mike and I will be doing that.
Big deal.
Um, so we will be busy, but that is okay. We'll catch it next year. Food distribution this Thursday at noon, the normal place. The open house tours, this is very exciting. I'm hoping people know about this and are going to come. So there's one this Thursday at 5:30.
Yep, 5:30 to 7:30.
5:30 to 7:30, MSB in City Hall.
Yep.
And are these, just for our listeners, they can come anytime in that, or they should be there, they can come any.
They can come anytime.
Quite literal open house.
Yep.
Okay. And then again, on the Saturday from noon to 12, right? Same deal.
10 to 12.
What did I say?
Noon to 10.
Noon to 12.
[laughing].
So sorry.
Open to you there, right downtime.
And so people are worried. There'll be two, two things in City Hall. So basically, there'll be the police station that they tour through, and then there'll be the rest of City Hall. And then at the MSB, it's basically just the whole building.
So people, hopefully, tell a friend, bring a friend.
And, but you had mentioned that we should try to make those. Do we have to worry about the council being in one place?
Yeah, I guess my suggestion would be, is it'd be good to, if, if possible, it'd be good to have maybe one person at, so one person Thursday night at City Hall, one person Thursday night at MSB, and then maybe it's two other people that are at MSB Saturday, City Hall Saturday. It's not, it's not a big deal if it doesn't work, but I thought it might be a good opportunity for you guys to sort of hear what are the questions that we're getting, some of the feedback, things, things like that. Obviously, we can have two at one location, so like, you know, if all five of you wanted to do something, we could have, you know, the mayor rotating around or something like that. But just give it some thought. I think it might, you know, like I said, it might be a good opportunity for you guys to hear some of the, the feedback and questions and things we're getting from the public who go through. But just, easiest way, you can just email me with what works for you, and then I can get back out, sort of, here's what people are saying.
Yeah, perfect. And then.
This Thursday and Saturday.
Yep.
Um, one last, I think this is my last thing. There's a low-cost license and vaccine clinic on May 19th from 3 to 6 at the Valley Evangelical, the big blue church on the corner of Angler and 41. Um, that is.
Valley Free.
Yeah, Valley Free. I just couldn't say the word evangel.
Evangelical.
Evangelical? It's 11 o'clock.
I have that.
And the reason I want to just mention this is I have, I think when I got my dogs, microchip was at an event just like this with Value Care and the PD, and it was so nice to get, it was very easy to get the microchipped, and I just rest assured that if they ever go missing and their tag falls off or something, that they, they have that microchip. So I highly encourage our pet owners to be responsible. Come get these vaccines and come get the microchip. It is super, um, I don't know if they're doing, it doesn't say micro, oh, it does say microchip. Super affordable, and it just is like being a responsible pet owner, so highly recommend. Please do this. I think it's a great spot to do it. It's easy. They run you right through there, and it's, yeah, just effective and good. So do it, please. Thank you. And I think that's everything I had.
All right, awesome. Thanks. You're up.
Oh, okay. Um, yeah, wonderful. I, I mean, I feel like Councilmember Hatfield mentioned a couple that I was gonna talk about, but the one, I guess the only one would be two things, actually. One, there's an Arboretum, Minnesota Landscape Arboretum Plan Improvement Open House, and that is Thursday, May 26th, from 4:30 to 6:30. That's at the Arboretum. It's in the Macmillan Auditorium, which is just inside the Oswald Visitor Center. For those familiar, it's like where the gift shop is, kind of main building. I'm assuming, if, yeah, free, open to the public. You just gotta let the gatehouse attendants know. So I just wanted to touch on that. And then, I don't think we're having a meeting before Memorial Day happens, so I just wanted to, you know, honor Memorial Day, those who served, those who've given their life, you know, paid the ultimate sacrifice and pay respect to them, and, and wish everyone a safe and honorable Memorial Day. And we do have events, which I'll let some. And we do have events, which I'll let someone else touch on, but I just wanna say that.
While, while we're on that, I'll just bring that up. Uh, in Matt's biweekly, he talked about that. The parade was gonna start at the original route, which is down by the old junior high. It's not, it's starting at the corner of Fifth and Pine.
Right across the street here.
So basically across the street and it'll go out to sixty-one, take a left, and then a right on Creek Road and into the park. So, um, for anybody still viewing, you can park at, at the Creek and Pine lot and watch parade go by. And then you can just walk right over to, uh, the Veterans Park for the ceremonies that begin at, uh, parade starts, parade starts at ten o'clock sharp and it goes over there and goes right into the services.
Yep.
So. So, uh, for anybody that was wondering, they try, they've always tried to go by Auburn Manor and that, the actual honor guard stops there with the bus and does a little, quick little thing there. So they'll be able to see something, just not the parade, because of the long distance to get there. I just wanted to clarify that as long as we're on Memorial Day.
And it's very hard to march that far if you had to.
That'd be a long ways.
It's a long march.
Across forty-one, too.
Yeah.
And the state patrol.
Mine was very short and I was dying by the end.
Doesn't like that. Yeah, we used to go a long ways. We used to go down forty-one, second, round GA, back around third, down. It was a long ways. All right.
Yes. Thank you. Um, so, um, just wanna mention that, uh, just a thank you to everyone for coming out for Christmas in May. It was a really, really great event this year. Um, you know, we, we did a lot of work on three different houses throughout the community and it was, uh, great to participate and to give back. And it was one of those things that certainly if you hadn't participated before, would like to encourage you to sign up for next year's Christmas in May. Um, you know, certainly I believe that we really made the, uh, made the day for those homeowners or week or month for these homeowners. Um, so it's always a great turnout and just great to see the community so engaged in such a positive way, giving back.
And the food community committee was great.
The food committee was amazing.
And I think, you know, Matt's son was working hard, pulling things in a Home Depot.
Yeah, yes. Yeah.
Just confirming.
It was a really good evaluation.
We even fed him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He called me and went, bring food. Dad, do you think we could get some food?
No, he worked, he worked really hard that day, so.
Yep, and then, um, this past Friday was Chaska Bash, so it was a, you know, a great kickoff of a great event there for a fundraiser for Chaska Hawks, uh, for Chaska High School. And, um, I think a couple, you know, I think there, um, uh, there are a couple of these other things we're touched on already, but, um, also wanna mention that this June celebrates the fifty years of Chaska High School Girl's Sports, which is a really kind of a big deal. It's one of the things you kind of think back, it's like, so I'm fifty-one, but within my own lifetime, you know, girl's sports weren't a thing, right? So if you go back past that time, you know, to be a woman and wanna participate in sports, you just couldn't, right? It was like, it was kind of a men's only thing. And so to have girl's sports, uh, women participating in sports in Chaska High School for fifty years is a really, really super cool thing. So I just wanted to, you know, give that a shout out. Um, and, um, also, and as, uh, Councilmember Hatfield mentioned, that, uh, Southwest Transit will be entering CEO candidates on Wednesday. And so, uh, we have three candidates, two of them from out of state, one internal. I'm looking forward to having them, uh, meet with, um, not just, um, the commission members, but also, um, the, um, Southwest Transit staff and also meeting with them, different members of the team. So we're trying to get a wide cross-section view, um, and get the feedbacks from across the organization. So it'll be probably one of the most important hires we'll make at Southwest Transit, as, um, they will be very much driving the, uh, the direction of the organization for the foreseeable future, so.
Will they be driving the bus? Could be.
And we'll all get on that bus.
At eleven fourteen, Matt said a funny.
And, um, and the only other question I had was something we talked about ad nauseam about, we were talking about revised notification areas. So I think we covered that.
What, we did?
Maybe, possibly.
Oh, no, we got, we got the, we got the date down now.
We've been notified. It was on my list, but anyway, we, we, one of those things, I mean.
Mike wants me to notify.
We've been talking about this for like years, too. You know, I brought it up with Kevin like a long, you know, like fifteen years ago, so. It's, I'm, it's, you know, it's glad we're doing it, um, so, yeah, very much so. That's all I got.
Uh, I have a question in the event, uh, I wanna thank you. Question, um, just curious, uh, June, uh, is Pride Month. Last June, we did an event in the partnership with.
Yep, they advertised it.
That's our, yeah.
Yep.
Awesome, just I think.
I just can't remember, oh.
Pick up the.
June twelfth.
Yeah.
June twelfth, three to six, I think it is.
Perfect, good, I just, I've lived on it because we filled the last two weeks, so I've kind of been, um, which actually brings me to what I wanted to say. Um, Chaska Classic, uh, was here this weekend, brings a lot of out-of-town visitors to watch lots of, uh, I, I'll say when baseball's still fun and, you know, fun and excitement with young kids playing it. Um, you know, I will, a couple of things with that, I'll just say shout out to kind of the city staff and the public works. Uh, cleaning the parks up is, was a difficult challenge this year. Uh, there were several attempts to do cleanup events that got rained out twice. Um, so usually you get a swath of volunteers that, you know, softball association, baseball association, volunteers to get volunteer credit. Those both got washed out, but the parks were, were looking good in a challenging time with water, wind, and everything that's happened. So I just wanna shout that out. Um, and then just out of personal knowledge, shout out the Chaska Boys Nine double A team who, uh, won the championship. And I would be transparent to say that my son's on that team, so that's why I shout out.
All right.
So, uh, yeah, they won, I believe, if I looked at it correctly, they're the only Chaska team that actually took first. While all other games were played well and exciting, but, uh, just a shout out to that Nine double A team for taking first in the Chaska Classic, so.
Congrats.
Fun. And the sunburn is not from this weekend, it's from the previous weekend. I feel a little crazy, so, uh, that's all I have.
All right. Nate.
Let me think that.
Elise. Mike.
Yeah. I'll get this out, uh, probably in the next biweekly, but I put in this biweekly some dates, uh, for different like work session, review type stuff coming up. So June sixth, it looks like at least one person's gonna be gone then. We're actually looking at doing a, that was gonna be my review. We'll do that instead on June twentieth.
Who else will be gone?
Oh, geez.
Sorry.
We'll find, we'll find some date.
Sorry.
But June sixth, what we are gonna do is we're gonna have a subsequent, uh, work session to talk to, uh, follow-up on Highway forty-one. Um, we've heard quite a bit of feedback from businesses about the closure of the bridge. And so we're looking at alternatives of how we can potentially keep that bridge open for the majority of the time. There's gonna be a time period, it has to be closed to, to make the connection, but we're looking at some alternatives, but it has impacts. And we wanna be able to show you what those impacts would be and get some feedback from you guys on, here's what we're hearing, uh, here's what we're thinking, uh, but let's understand sort of the impacts of, you know, of this and, and get some, some feedback from you guys on what direction we wanna move on that. But, uh, so we're gonna do that on June sixth and then, like we said, July thirteenth, that's a date we're gonna shoot for the, uh, joint session with the, uh, planning commission. So that's gonna be our target date right now. But, uh, and then we'll, we'll look for a different time, uh, maybe even before that first meeting in, uh, July, uh, for my review, so.
Remember the first meeting in July is the fourth, so we're gonna be down.
It's gonna be the eleventh.
Wait, when, when, what day was the joint meeting with planning?
We're looking at the thirteenth of July.
So it's a Wednesday?
It's a Wednesday.
Okay.
Try to match it up with their planning commission.
Would it be at like five-thirty or would it be?
Yeah, so we try to do it before their planning commission.
All right, I gotta put this.
So we'll basically have council on Monday and then two days later we'll have planning commission.
Yeah.
Or just beginning of it.
Invite you?
Yeah.
I'm putting on my like, hi Cal, are you cool with that?
But I'll get, I'll get on all those, those date revisions, uh, in there so that you guys have it.
Anything else?
No.
All right, uh, I already talked about parade route. Fishing with Friends has an event June fifth at Fireman's Park, I think it's like ten to two. Again, it's their fishing academy.
Yeah.
Uh, I actually did, I got a call from Carl Lacy that they're looking at, he's gonna call you. I told him it'd be wise to call you as well, but they, they were at, I didn't know that, uh, Davis has owned that, where the launch where we have the boat, the Fishing with Friends.
Oh, uh, Howard's Point.
Yeah. Um, but anyways, they were there for an event and the mayor of Shorewood was going by, and so what's going on? And they talked and, and then what's, what's that Davis's first name?
Uh, that one is Marty, I think.
Marty?
Yeah.
And she got ahold of him and Marty sent it to the staff, well, thanks for taking care. So anyways, they somehow now were kind of getting involved with Shorewood and they're trying to do, uh, both veterans homes and bring in, uh, some people out and going out on pontoons. And then there's a, apparently a lot where the construction workers parked, and they use that as a picnic site. And so anyways, more to come on that, that's like August fifteenth. Um, so I, I think, uh, Carl's got some great ideas and he's looking for ways that he, they need to be marketed better and be able to help get some, uh, donations to help, uh, carry these processes through, so. Um, but I just, like I said.
Be a great one for flags on or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that there's probably a few things and I think we should try to be able to get some, some other kind of media because of, one, our locals just not there. But I don't, we gotta get our starch trips, always looking for those things, get that and maybe even see if, well, the local TV stations. If they pull it all together, I think it'll be a pretty neat event.
Yep.
And I know they've done it for, they do the Hasting one and then they would do, where's the other one? Bloomington? They do one and one, but they're gonna try to do them combined together and then work with Chaska and Shorewood, so. Christmas in May has been touched, that's just, I still think that's one of the neatest events of all events that a city can do. And I just think that we're one of the last few around that still does it. And, and we're very strong with it, it's not haphazardly, it's done very well every year, so. And a lot of that's Matt right now, Matt's the chair of it, Matt doesn't get the credit, uh, due credit on that, that, uh.
All I do is just coordinate. Everybody else does all the work.
Coordination's important and, you know, I think it shows how, how well it goes. I, I, I as well was at the bash Friday night, um, I think numbers were down. I, I think part of it was is they were a little hesitant about going full bore. They were worried about COVID again and not being able to do it, so. But I, I think their donations were very well again. Uh, when I left, they had a pretty significant amount. I know, I know it was down, but, but for what was amount of people there, I thought they did very, very well, so. Got to go on a little tour with Brian and check out the north part of the, uh, the lakes and that railroad crossing that we're talking about, the regional trails and kind of followed around on that, so. Um, we're very interesting, it's been a long time since I've been up in that.
Brian even got a picture of the mayor doing some work.
I, I did all the work, Brian again did nothing. There was a tree blocking, so we had to go back and get chainsaws. And we had to drag all the stuff off. Yeah, there I was, work, work, work. But, um.
You were just happy to use a chainsaw?
He didn't let me use it.
That's probably.
He had the easy work. I had to haul all the stuff away. Um, but then lastly, Memorial Day, uh, really, I, every year, the, the vets clubs here in town do a tremendous job putting, organizing, getting things lined up. Uh, always good speakers, um, please take time out of our busy schedules to, for two hours at most, to, to go there and, and honor those that, that protected us all these years and had, uh, still are protecting us. So I hope you get a chance to go there and, and, uh, remember what the weekend's all about, it's not a three-day weekend. Still honoring those that served and protected us, so. Ten o'clock starts and, uh, I'm sure you'll be done by eleven-ish, so. And then there's picnics afterwards that you can attend if you choose. So, uh, we have a short EDA meeting right after this, almost forgot about it. Um, I don't know, last call here, otherwise I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Hatfield.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hubbard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign. We adjourned and we will move, maybe we'll move into my EDA meeting, where to go, where to go? We'll call the EDA meeting, oh, here, we'll call the meeting, EDA meeting to order at eleven twenty-five.
Happens.
Elise, we call roll.
Commissioner Hatfield.
Here.
Commissioner Hubbard.
Here.
Commissioner Wong.
Here.
Commissioner Gra.
Here.
President Winchell.
Here. Uh, moves us to item three, adopting the agenda, corrections or additions to the agenda, if not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner, uh, Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Wong. Discussion, hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same sign. Motion carries, uh, next, approving the April fourth EDA meeting. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve.
Uh, so moved.
Motion by Commissioner, um, Hubbard.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gra. Discussion. Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All same sign. Motion carries, moves us to item five, authorize letter of intent for TIP assistance for the proposed Chaska Creek Industrial Phase Three Op- Opodin Project.
I'm gonna turn this one over to Elise.
Uh, President Commissioners, I'll be short. Um, earlier this evening on your consent agenda, there was, um, approval given to Opodin's, uh, Chaska Creek Industrial Phase Three. It's building upon what's happening out there right now with Phase One. Phase Two will begin construction later this year, more than likely. So, uh, the developer is seeking, uh, TIP assistance, uh, in looking at our policy, this development will continue to grow jobs as well as the tax base, so, uh, looking at, uh, economic development, TIP district over eight years. Uh, so we've drafted, uh, with the developer, a letter of intent, which has been included in your packet for this evening. Just some key points, uh, that I wanted to point out was that, uh, assistance would be given at two times the TIP eligible property taxes, which follows the city's policy on this, and that's about four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Uh, additionally, as in Phase One, they have, um, seen that there will be, uh, significant soil corrections that will be needed out there and similar to what has been done in Phase One, the developers proposing to split the costs of this additional work with the EDA. Uh, so the city share would be about two hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars with that. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending that EDA approval of the letter in, of intent. If that is approved this evening, we will work with the developer to, uh, draft those, uh, development agreements and bring those back for your review. And I believe, uh, Jay Moore from Opodin might still be on if there are any questions.
Oh, boy.
Whoa. Sorry to wake you.
You know, I, full disclosure, I had, I had a third degree and I was sleeping a little bit ago on my flight. Hit me, I said, get up, you gotta listen. I'm still with you, hello?
So, uh, the only question I would have out of that, is that for the, across from Creek Road or up on Angler?
Uh, across on Creek.
Okay.
Third.
Please, please go ahead and clarify.
Oh, that's all right, it's, it's the, uh, Phase Three that, which is on the opposite side of Creek Road.
Okay. Cause in reading that staff report, it said it may not happen this year, but it may, but I know that's kind of just leaving things depending how things work.
Yeah, so in talking, and Jay can clarify too, uh, it would begin after, you know, Phase Two is well underway. So later this year, probably early next year.
When you say Phase Two, I think that's up on the hill. So that is gonna start this year?
Uh, I don't know, it starts tomorrow.
Oh, I thought you were going right across, I got it, okay.
So if I can just refresh your memory, Phase One is the building that's.
Yep.
Up now, which will be completed by June thirtieth. Phase Two, we've had to have the, uh, soil, because there's still soil issues there, but we did not request additional TIP there, but we still haven't surcharged that site. And the soil is still settling, a very minimal amount, it's not stabilized yet. However, we're gonna start from the north and go south. at very minimal, and it's not stabilized yet. However, we're gonna start from the north and go south, so that's gonna start tomorrow. We're gonna restart the Orion this morning, start for that building construction tomorrow. We've had the building permanent hand for about a month or so. But Phase Three, for Chaska Free, which we're talking about tonight, is south of Creek Road. It's a club west property. We are in for building permanent right now. We're gonna close on July one. Expect the site, to start the, uh, site work in July, with all the plays, site work, but there's a lot of correction that needs to be happened. That's why the request is in front of you tonight. And to put that building up by next August of twenty-three, that third building will be completed.
Oh, okay.
And so, we've had numerous requests and proposals from lots of tenants. Uh, I can't give you the names of the tenants, but we have three to four right now, like we did, we have locked up the first two buildings, many of which have lots of jobs, and I think economics ability that you would be very proud of. And we wish to proceed on building three, but it's a huge investment, and, you know, with these three buildings, it's sixty million dollars or so, but as you heard before, tonight, costs are crazy, construction is crazy. We're trying to bring this to the forefront, but there's a little loose soil issue there. Four to fourteen feet of correction, which is part of the, part of the conditions that we're dealing with, so we're asking for some support in the way of this TIP development.
Good. Thanks for clarifying, Matt. I, I definitely was, uh, not in the right thinking here. So, all right, awesome. Anyone else have a question for anyone? I think this is pretty straightforward. This isn't any different than what we did on Phase One. So, um, as I said, we're gonna get a lot of, uh, a lot to gain on the end, end, end run here, so. All right. Uh, is somebody interested in making a motion?
I'm moved that we authorized a letter of intent for TIP assistance for the proposed Chaska Creek Industrial Phase Three.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Wong.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hatfield. Discussion. Hearing seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Post same sign. Thanks for hanging with us, Jay.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council, Elise, Matt, everybody, thank you so much.
All right.
Mike.
See you soon.
You know, one thing I'll just mention real quick about these economic development districts is one of the real benefits of them is they're only eight years.
They're short.
And so we get the benefit of helping them get in the ground, but really, it's such a short turnaround until we actually get those back in the tax rolls again, so it, it's a, it's a real beneficial thing for us to help expedite getting them in.
Do they start when they start building, or start when they open?
They, they have, we have to have everything set before they start building.
So two years.
But, so, yeah, it, there's, that's the other thing with the, these eight-year districts. They do build in a year to let the sort of taxes catch up, uh, with that, so I guess technically they're nine from the date that it starts. Uh, but, uh, you know, that first year, it's basically land, there's really nothing to it.
Right. All right. Anyone have any other business? Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Commissioner Graff.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hubbard. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. We'll see you on June thirtieth, June sixth. Happy Memorial Day.
Yes, I meant to.